Let us pray. Eternal God, I have and Father, again we come in your presence and we thank you for this opportunity. We ask that you direct us as we go through decision-making process and may there be peace and harmony among all men. We ask in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America.
One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Doeman.
Here.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes, here.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Mottier.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ward.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Our next item is an approval of the minutes for the August 5, 2020 work session. That would be a motion in order. Councilman Fawcett.
Motion to approve.
Councilman Goldberg.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Mottier.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
The motion is approved. I vote a eight to zero.
Thank you. We do have special presentations this evening. Our first one is a COVID-19 update. Mr. Manager?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, this time I'd like to call Dr. Wagner to the podium. Of course, I hate to say it, but this will probably be Dr. Wagner's last visit with us as he's taken a new position and we really have enjoyed having him with us. With that, he'll provide you the update with the COVID-19.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. Thank you again for the opportunity to update you and speak with you this evening about a, for a COVID-19 update. Next slide, please. We'll again talk about some of the data which I suspect you all know is sort of worsening in the area. We'll talk a little bit more in depth about that. So as you know, nationwide, in virtually every state, cases continue to rise, hospitalizations continue to rise, and unfortunately deaths continue to rise, and Virginia's in a similar situation although not as bad as many of the other states. In fact, our, our incidence rate is about the fourth lowest in the country right now. So not trending the way we would like it to, like it to trend, but we're not currently in, in quite a bad a shape as some states are right now. But again, as, as has been the case, over 200,000, 208,000 cases in Virginia, 13,000 hospitalizations, and just over 3,800 deaths. If you can scroll down, please, and you can see the current positivity rate. I've talked to you in the past, I think last time we talked was just over six. Now it's north of seven percent. So we'll talk a little bit. If you can go, Andy, down to the locality, please. And if you could go, this is, like you see, this is the state of Virginia. You can see this sizable upswing here in numbers of cases. This large spike here was sort of a data correction that occurred from some additional data over the weekend, but irregardless, you're seeing a fairly, a fairly steep rise in the number of cases in the state of Virginia. And if you could go to Western Tidewater, please, Andy. Suffolk is fine, yeah, that's fine. You can see in Suffolk, we, you know, this was the spike that occurred early in the summer. This was the, the increase due to the outbreak in the jail, but you can see we were relatively flat and then about 10, 12 days ago, we've been, we've been seeing an increase in the number of cases. And we are seeing that throughout the whole Western Tidewater Health District and also in, in the eastern region. Of note, and I think I mentioned it last time, cities of Chesapeake and Virginia Beach are seeing sizable increases and as has been the case in the past, we usually lag behind them about seven to ten, seven to 10 days, and we're seeing a similar trend here. So that, again, combined with gatherings that are likely to be forthcoming here in the, in the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays, travel, cold weather, schools, you know, more, more in-person education, although we still have largely virtual education in, in our district. All those are concerning in that, you know, we anticipate seeing more cases if we're not, if we're not very careful. So you can go down to testing, please, Andy. And again, this just shows, and if you could go, and again, state of Virginia at about 7.1 percent. In the state, we're doing about 20,000 tests per day, and you can go on down to Western Tidewater if you would, Andy, for me. And again, you can see Western Tidewater hovering at about 5.7 percent. Again, not still below the state average, but starting to see sort of an upswing in those, in, in the percent positivity, which is currently largely driven within the city of Suffolk. The other municipalities within Western Tidewater are not quite as high in prevalence or percent positivity as Suffolk. So definitely need to keep our, all of the mitigation measures that we have into effect to continue to try and, you know, make this situation that appears to be sort of a, a not so good appearing situation, try and turn that curve back down. Next slide, please, if you could. This again gives you a, sort of a numeric depiction. This is the eastern region, just to give you an appreciation of what's kind of happening regionally. Again, this is made up of the cities of our, our district plus Norfolk, Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, Eastern Shore, Portsmouth, and the Peninsula District. So you can see this incidence rate per 100,000 continues to trend upward. This is Western Tidewater. This is that upswing that I spoke of. This is the breakdown by age group, so you can see all the age groups are, are beginning to turn northward, so we really can't attribute the increases to any particular population group. It's sort of a uniform, a uniform increase throughout all of the, all, all the populations there. So next slide, please. And again, this is the graphic depiction, again, looking at, again, cases, burden, which are cases on this side, and trends in those. Again, this is the city of Suffolk. You can see 17.1, or excuse me, 17.7 incidence rate per 100,000 increasing here, and the trend continues to increase. That, that upward trend means it's been going on for at least 14 days in an upward trend. So again, you can see both, both incidents and percent positivity in this last, you know, week to two weeks has been increasing. This again is the depiction that the school districts use, and I bring your attention again, in this depiction, the city of Suffolk also in red and yellow, sort of in, in the highest risk category. And as you know, the school district here in Suffolk has chosen to stay with virtual, virtual learning through the first of the year. Next slide, please. So other issues that we're looking at, obviously, that's, that's the data. Again, the schools, as I just mentioned, although continuing largely in a online offering, continue to look at possibilities for phased reopening, but, you know, right now with the trends looking the way they, that they are, I don't, I don't think they would be inclined to make a different decision likely at this point. As many of you know, there were modifications done to the governor's executive orders 63 and 67, which was, and this is very much a generalization, it's, there's a lot of different inclusions to those, those modifications, but the big highlights is I've listed here, there's a reduction in, in public and private in-person gathering size was moved from 250 down to 25, but of note, schools and restaurants were excluded from that. Restaurants are still under, obviously, distancing and occupancy limits through that, but there are no, there are no percent occupancy restrictions at this point. It's all just, if they're able to accommodate the six foot of distancing, they're excluded. Expansion of the mask mandate, where masks used to be required from age 10 and up has now been lowered to age five and up in, in all public spaces indoors. And then strengthened enforcement of essential retail businesses. It's always been a, it's always been a best practice to encourage masking, but now they've expanded the enforcement capability, or not the capability, but there's, and there's going to be a, potentially a heightened strengthen, strengthening of enforcement of those restrictions or those requirements to, to have masking in retail businesses. And then curfews, alcohol is to be stopped at 10:00 PM and any onsite food consumption is to be, you know, stopped between 12:00 and 5:00 AM. So sort of analogous to where we were back when the eastern region was, the new mandates were put into place at the beginning of July, this is, is sort of a similar depiction of that, but this is obviously now statewide. We're continuing to test. We've got two testing events coming up, December 2nd and December 3rd, December 2nd, in the city of Franklin from 10:00 to 2:00 PM, and then December 3rd at the Suffolk Health Department from 10:00 until 2:00 o'clock in the afternoon. All comers will, will be testing until we run out of tests. Again, not too late to get your flu vaccinations, highly encouraged, always, always encouraged, but particularly this year. We're definitely in the midst of flu season and it's, it's a perfect time, if you haven't already, to get your flu vaccine. And then COVID vaccination, you're hearing a lot about it. There's a couple of vaccines that are nearing the emergency use authorization, appear to be very, have some very great potentials, both purporting about 95% effectiveness, so that's a, that's a great, that's a great sign, that's great, great information. We don't have exact date for vaccine arrival yet, but looking at sort of the way things are going, we're anticipating it come, could come as early as mid to late December. Obviously, the first wave of that will be targeted at, you know, healthcare providers, first responders, but we anticipate a, a, a rolling prioritization as, as the vaccine comes in, in greater numbers. We anticipate in that first wave, we'll probably get a relatively small amount of vaccine because the, the state just won't, won't get a large amount initially and then it'll, it'll begin to continue to, to increase as, as the weeks go along. But, you know, we're hopeful, perhaps as early as that mid to late December timeframe, and we're, we're ready to, to, to deliver that, you know, in our, in our piece of it. So we're, we're looking forward to that opportunity. And I think that's all I've got for you. Next slide, please. So I'll open up for questions, and I, I do, before I take questions, I would like to say thank you to all the council members. This will be my last meeting. I've got Dr. Lauren James is with me here today. She'll be taking over for, as the interim health director. She's the city of Portsmouth health director right now, so she's very familiar with the, the challenges that we're facing. They're facing similar ones in the city of Portsmouth, but it's been an absolute pleasure working with all of you and the, and the city. I really appreciate the, the support you've given to our health department and throughout my, my stay, so thank you.
We will miss you, and thank you for everything you've done during this very difficult time. And I know you've been every day on this, so thank you so much from all of us. Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I, I first want to thank you for your, everything you've done. You've just been great and your staff. I've called a couple of times, they've been right on the spot and they've just been great, and I really appreciate you bringing us the information. It's really helped when people have called me and asked me, what do we know about it? We can give them the facts that you have given us, so I really appreciate that. But one question about the vaccine. Do we have the capability, couple, the two vaccines, I've been reading a lot, a lot about it, one has to be real cold.
Cold, cold or refrigerated? Super cold.
Super cold. Do we have the ability here to handle that?
We do, and the answer is yes, but actually the way they package it, it comes in the, in the coolers from, as it's shipped, it's, it's, it's actually self-contained and all you have to do is replenish with dry ice. The Virginia Department of Health has, has a dry ice contract that, that are in place right now. So to answer your question, yes, but the, but the hope is really not to have to transfer a lot of the vaccine and, and hold it in large numbers, but we do have super cold freezers too that we can use, but the hope is it'll actually come contained in those, in those appropriate containers that, that will keep that, that cold temperature.
How do you handle, they said there'll be, you have to have two shots?
Two shots.
Two shots.
At least on the initial, the, the one-shot vaccine appears to be coming out in the February timeframe, but the two vaccines that are nearest to, to reaching EUA are a two-shot series, 21 and 28 days respectively. You don't have to give it exactly on the 21st day, there's a, a little window there, but you need to wait at least 21 and 28 days, right?
Good. Well, thank you, and I really appreciate what you've done.
You're welcome.
Wish you the best.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilman Fawcett.
Thanks, Mayor. Doc, I appreciate the, all the times you've been here and, and just gave us a whole boatload of information and guidance. I'm certainly hope that the people watching and listening, it's been helpful to them. We certainly want to continue our practices even more so now that we've, it looks like we're running into a little bit of a wall here, so, you know, that's something we need to look at. And you alluded to when they start the vaccines and you talked about first responders and maybe some of the older folks. Is there any idea where that cutoff's going to start? Is it going to be 55 or 60 and move forward? Or do you have any real thoughts about?
In terms of an age grouping, is that?
For us to, to forget that vaccine, for where are they going to start at age-wise? Is, I've heard rumors it's going to be 55 and older.
And typically, the, the line that's kind of been drawn in, in the whole COVID timeframe here has been 65 and older. I think, age aside, I think what we'll see is a, as a more of a targeted to long-term care facilities, congregate living, in addition to. care facilities, congregate living, in addition to age, because those folks that are typically of that age, living in congregate settings, are, are at the highest, highest risk, and then, you know, after that, folks that are, you know, not in congregate settings but of a, of an older age group. But, so I think the initial prioritization will be, as I mentioned, healthcare providers, likely first responders, followed quickly by long-term care facilities, and then higher-risk people that aren't in long-term care facilities, but.
Well, and I, and I want to just ask you one other thing. Don Goldberg, our councilman here, talked about the temperatures that you guys maybe haven't, depending on who you get it from or what the actual, I guess, manufacturer's requirements are, but if that stuff is in such, you know, dry ice, bringing it down to like minus ninety degrees or whatever it is, what does that do to the actual formula inside? Is it going to, is that going to affect that formula? Is it going to have to be a warm-up period?
You have to, you, you do have to bring it up to a, to a, to a warmer temperature before you, before you inoculate somebody, you do, so there is a, it is a logistical exercise in doing that. You can't remove it right out of the freezer, so it's, it's kind of a, you have to keep it stored in that, in that format, but then you have to, you have to bring it up closer to room temperature to be able to, to, to deliver the vaccine. So, it, it is a little bit of a, a logistical exercise in how you plan and how you bring it to the, you know, the, the site of delivery, you know, you just, yeah.
With that, I, I just want to say, along with my colleague here, Mr. Goldberg, that it's been a pleasure having you come to council. It's been a pleasure to get to know who you are. I, I wish you all luck in your new endeavor, that it's going to take you places you want to go, and Dr. James, I believe, will be looking forward to maybe hearing from her in the near future. So, thanks for giving us your time and coming here and giving our citizens all the information that you've provided us. We hope to see you somewhere along the way, I'm sure.
Thank you, well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilman Miltier.
Doctor, we wanted to show our appreciation to you for your information that you have provided for us, and we hoping that this information will go out to the public and that they might take advantage of the cures for this virus, and, and that, because you indicated Virginia was seven point one percent.
Right.
That's too high to be continued.
I appreciate that, you're exactly right. You know, we, we can guide it, but it's really up to the, the, the citizens to do the work, and, and I hope, I, I appreciate your support, and, and I do hope that, you know, the public that's listening and, and every day that they're, you know, taking heed and doing what they can to, to support the cause, so I appreciate that.
Vice Mayor.
Well, again, Dr. Wagner, thank you so much for your relationship that you've shared with us here at the city, and you will greatly be missed, I'm sure, but you are turning it over to great Dr. James, and I'm sure that she will follow in your footsteps and keep us well informed of what's taking place. But you have been very supportive of us coming to the meetings and giving us all the information so the public can see exactly what is taking place in their area, and it's coming from a professional, not from fake news. So, it's coming, well, everybody knows coming from the scientists and what, what they're saying, so, again, I really do appreciate it and wish you well on your endeavor, wherever it's taking you, but we have enjoyed you being here in Suffolk.
You're in very good hands with Dr. James, City of Suffolk's in very good hands, so.
Councilman Ward.
Yes, I'd like to thank Dr. Wagner for your professionalism, your caring, the way you delivered the information, and you gave us a lot of information, and you on time, you on spot, because situation had, you came, not only you just came, but you made sure everything's all right, we built a little relationship, put a little article about you, but one thing about it, you, you gave me yourself a number, and you answered it. If you didn't answer, you'll call me back. Thank, thank you so much, and God bless you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our second presentation this evening is the 2020 holiday update. Mr. Manager.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, this time I'd like to call Teresa Earls, Tourism Development Manager, to the podium, who's going to give us that energetic presentation like she does every year.
I don't know, 2020's been hard. Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Honorable Counsel, Mr. Manager. I can say with absolute certainty that 2020 is not the year we expected, and nor is the holiday season going to look exactly the same either. As I go through all the things that are planned for this season, please understand that a lot of these things that we normally have have either been canceled or postponed or modified to be contact-free or even virtual in some cases. And as we get closer to the end of the year, events are going to be happening that aren't on this presentation, and I'm going to do a little plug for my own website, visit SuffolkVA.com, and we'll keep updating that long after this presentation. Now, let's see if I do this right. Well, our first event to kick off the holiday season is our virtual grand illumination, so this is the best way to curl up in PJs with some hot chocolate at home and watch the illumination Friday night at six P.M. You'll see the, the tree light at Market Park, you'll get a message from our mayor, and of course, a presentation or a performance by the King's Ringers. It's a handbell choir from Suffolk Christian Church, and the tree will be on display and through the first of the year, so we're still encouraging folks, if they want to stop by and take their family photo in front of it, that's certainly fine. There just won't be an in-person illumination this year, but this is going to be the next best thing. And I know a lot of folks are sad that we're not able to have a parade this year, but we are using this as an opportunity to fulfill an idea or a dream, perhaps, that we have often talked about in our meetings for years, that we'd love to have a lighted drive-through display, and this is the first step towards having that, our Festival of Lights at Sleepy Hole Park. Parks and Recreation has really taken the lead and has run with this. This is going to be a drive-through illumination through Sleepy Hole Park that will start Friday as well, and will run through the end of December. Every night from five-thirty to nine-thirty, we will close Thanksgiving and Christmas and that sort of thing, but it's free and open to the public, and I, I, while I want to say that it will be absolutely magical, it's going to be very quaint. It is literally the seed that we're planting this year, hoping that it will continue to grow and bloom year after year and become something amazing, but we've got to start somewhere, and this is where we're starting, so it's a great chance to pack up the family, put on some holiday music, and drive through Sleepy Hole Park. As we always do, we remind everyone to stay safe the Suffolk Way, wear a mask, use hand sanitizer, and remain socially distant by six feet. The events that I'm going to discuss with you, you know, they're subject to change based on the Governor's mandates or any other COVID restrictions that we may get in the meantime, so just know that going forth, that like everything else in 2020, it's subject to change. On December fifth, we'll be holding our Suffolk Holiday Gift Market, that's at the Farmer's Market essentially, ten to three P.M. It's free and open to the public, and we will have about twenty-five vendors spread far apart, we'll even have a food vendor. We've eliminated some things like Santa photos and petting zoos to kind of keep people moving through the event, not necessarily congregating in one place, but as we do with our Farmer's Market, we keep our vendors a minimum of six feet apart. We encourage everyone to wear a mask, we even offer them complimentary to our guests. We also have hand washing stations and hand sanitizer throughout the event, and this is our opportunity to get some level of normalcy while supporting some of our local artisans. We will also be sponsoring Frozen Two on the big screen at the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts. Due to some of the restrictions that are in place now, we can only seat a hundred people in the five-hundred-and-thirty-seat theater, so in order to make that happen, we are charging one dollar per person, and you can purchase those tickets online at SuffolkCenter.org, and that helps us reserve the seats according to the number of people coming. Typically, we see anywhere from three to four hundred kids and families come for these family events, so we've had to really whittle it down, so to speak, but one dollar per person, and on December twelfth. We will also be offering Great Dismal Swamp nature strolls. We've had to convert our bus tours into nature walks, which is something we already offered, but this gives us a chance to really get people out into the wilderness, so to speak. They're always at ten A.M., the dates are listed, we have November and through December. Typically, our week around Christmas, we always sell out of our Great Dismal Swamp tours, so I don't know that this year will be any different. It's seven dollars for adults, five dollars for seniors, military, and children. This is led by a biologist who knows all about the history of the swamp and can give you a better glimpse than any of us could. Now, for the arts, we have a glassblowing workshop by Neil Dumon at the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts. He's offering two days, the twentieth and the twenty-first of November, and these are fifty-five dollars and well worth every penny. You can learn to make a holiday ornament or a miniature sculpture. You do have to get your tickets in advance through SuffolkCenter.org, and if you're interested in glassblowing or anything along those lines, I would definitely check into this and understand that there's, it's going to be limited as far as space and the number of people, so I would not wait. The Suffolk Art League's annual jury exhibition will still be on display through December fourth. They are open Tuesday through Sunday, and it's free and open to the public. Of course, you have to wear your mask, but you can enjoy that virtually any day. In Plain Sight, an art exhibition at the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts, will continue through December nineteenth. That is free and open to the public, they're open Tuesday through Saturday, eleven to four, and right now, you can actually purchase a lot of that artwork through their website. And something that just came in, Tourism is sponsoring a holiday concert on December tenth through the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts. There'll be, I believe, eight professional vocalists performing holiday classics, and it's not going to be in person, it's going to be virtual, so there's a chance to have the biggest audience we've ever had. It's twenty dollars per person, and if you follow them on Facebook, you can get more information about that. The Suffolk Library, they have worked out how to create virtual holiday fun like no one else. You must register for these events, and you can pick up your own free kits from the library, so it's limited due to quantity, so you need to get your registration in early. You can take the chance and do a holiday meal makeover on December eighteenth. It will be free, it'll be happening online throughout the day, you go and pick up your kit, and the Suffolk Public Library is going to teach you how to transform a traditional holiday dish into a healthier version. Whether or not you want that option, I do not know, but it's a, it's a chance to try something different. And then for December thirty-first, which is our New Year's Eve, obviously, and our little kids think they can stay up, but of course, they can't, so they do Noon Year's Eve on December thirty-first every year. This time it'll be virtual, you can come in advance and pick up a box with everything you need, noise makers and balloons, and you do have to register ahead of time, and then you follow it online as it's happening at eleven-thirty A.M. on New Year's Eve. And of course, I think the most important message that I'm going to share with you today is the importance of loving local and buying Suffolk. Our small businesses now, more than ever, need your support and the support of the community to stay in business and to continue to thrive when we know that the big-box stores and the online retailers will be just fine. Now's the time to really put our, show our love to our community businesses. All of these folks have great ideas and options for what they're going to offer at their events, but this is just a listing, and this is, I'm sure, not all of the businesses across the city that are doing things, but this is what I had at the time. A Dotson's is going to be celebrating Small Business Saturday on November twenty-eighth, as we know, that's always the Saturday after Black Friday. Nansman Brewing Station, they're going to have some pop-up retailers, I think they're doing yoga, they're going to have a fun time with some music. Driver is offering their Christmas and driver program, which they do every year, but they are encouraging social distancing, they're collecting toys, and there'll be ways to take photos with Santa and so on. Decent People Tap Room up in North Suffolk, they are offering a toy and food drive throughout the season, as well as offering discounts for those who contribute to both of these drives. And Bornery, et cetera, is offering We're Nuts for Christmas, a special holiday shopping day set forth on the third and the fifth of December. There'll be prizes and discounts and fun stuff to keep you coming back, and of course, supporting your local business. Vintage Tavern is offering a holiday jazz brunch on December sixth. I believe they still have some room left, but it's getting very close to filling up, so if you're interested, I recommend going on their website and making a reservation. The Penner House Bed and Breakfast on Penner Street, they are doing a holiday market where they're having local artisans come, and they're having crepes and coffee, and Harper's Table is doing Brunswick Stew, and it is a free market to come to, but you need to go online to get tickets so that they can properly spread people out at different timeframes so that everyone is socially distanced and healthy and, and doing everything they need to do to make it a successful event. If you go to the Penner House website or their Facebook page, it will lead you through Eventbrite to purchase your tickets or reserve your space, it's not a purchase. Happy Hour Glass Works, I don't know if you're familiar, but this is a quaint little shop in Driver where you can do hands-on glasswork, like stained glass, and they're offering workshops throughout the season, whether you want to do angel-fused glass, snowflake poinsettia ornaments, gingerbread houses, and whimsical trees, they have options for everyone, and it starts at the beginner stage, so you don't have to be an artist to join, but these are affordable, fun classes that are, again, limited in size and number, so if you're interested, I would definitely make that reservation now, purchase your tickets. Riverstone Chop House is also offering a holiday brunch on December twentieth at ten A.M., and then you can have New Year's Eve brunch at Decoys on January first, or I'm sorry, New Year's Day. No one's going to be up before brunch anyway, so it's perfect, but eleven to three at Decoys. Now, here's your friendly reminder, it might be letting you off the hook, the best way to support local restaurants this year is to not make your own holiday meal. You do not need to cook Thanksgiving because we have restaurants citywide willing to do it for you, where you just pick it up, you can heat it up, and it'll be perfect. Citywide eateries are offering these pre-ordered delicious meals, and these are some of the restaurants that are offering, and I'm sure more will be offering in days to come, but Hollands, Mason's, Vintage Tavern, Riverstone Chop House, the catering place, and Sugar Mama's Bake Shop is offering all kinds of wonderful pies for the holidays. And any kind of information that you need about restaurants, you can go to our brand-new website that Tourism has created called Dining in SuffolkVA.com. So, we have information for all the local restaurants, the national chains, and so on, and it tells you whether they have outdoor dining, takeout, carryout, find all your information there, and please remember to save washing the dishes for someone else and order out your food. The Suffolk Visitor Center remains open. The visitor center itself, the building is not open, but we have information to go on our front porch, you can come up to us, ring a bell, and you'll be served by one of our visitor advisors, of course, she will be wearing a mask or he, whoever answers the door, and we can help you with anything you need, whether it's directions or souvenir sales, we sell EZ passes, provide a lot of information, we're open Monday through Saturday, nine to five, and then Sunday, one to four, and of course, you can find us at Visit SuffolkVA.com. All of our social media is Visit SuffolkVA, so you can find us there as well. And I'm just going to say it for the zillionth time, love local, buy Suffolk for the holidays and every day, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have or entertain any comments.
Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a lot going on. Y'all have just done a fantastic job, it's just active and appreciate your effort.
Thank you, we're certainly trying, you know, it takes a lot more than our little department. This is truly a citywide effort between departments and our hospitality partners, our retailers, our restaurants, everyone is really pulling together to make the best experience for the community and to remind them to support all the people that make this community so great, so we're excited. We'll find the silver lining one way or another.
We will, and I think you've just shown us a lot of different ways to find it, so thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
At this time, we'll consider the adoption of the entire agenda as written unless someone would like to remove a consent agenda item. Councilman Dumon, move, do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dumon?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Miltier?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion is approved by vote of eight to zero.
Thank you, do we have agenda speakers this evening?
No, Mayor Johnson.
Would you please present the consent agenda item for consideration?
Item number seven, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Commonwealth of Virginia's Technology Trust Fund. Item number eight, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles Animal Friendly License Plate Program for animal shelter services. Item number nine, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Women's Impact Fund of the Suffolk Foundation for the Suffolk Public Library, and item number ten, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds for, from the OBC Healthcare Foundation for the Suffolk Public Library's COVID-nineteen response.
Mr. Manager, would you please provide the overview?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, item six, the city has received sixty-two thousand, six hundred and six dollars from the FY21 Technology Trust Funds from the Commonwealth of Virginia Compensation Board. These funds will be used by the Clerk of the Circuit Court for expenses related to the conversion of records from the years of eighteen to the conversion of records from the years of 1866 to 1973. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the general fund revenues and expenditures by $62,606 with no local match required. The next item, seven, the city has received $1,575 from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles Friendly, Animal Friendly License Plate Program. The funds will be used by the Animal Control Division for services to pets, for dogs and cats. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the Consolidated Grants Fund budget revenues and expenditures by the $1,575, and there's no local match. The next item, the city has received $530 grant from the Women's Impact Fund of the Suffolk Foundation to purchase books and materials focused on social and emotional learning. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the FY21 Consolidated Grants Fund budget by $530, and again, there's no local match. The next item, the city has received $31,250 grant from the OBC Healthcare Foundation to purchase and install exterior book lockers at the Morrigan and Chukataka libraries to allow 24/7 access to requested books. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the FY21 Consolidated Grants Fund budget by $31,250, and again, no local match.
Thank you. Are there any questions? And if not, I would entertain a motion. Councilman Fawcett?
Motion to approve.
Councilman Goldberg?
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Duman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Miltier?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion is approved by vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. We will next turn to our public hearings this evening, of which we have three. Our first public hearing is an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real property in fee simple and/or permanent and temporary easements, either, wait a minute, I think I'm, I've gotten ahead of myself here. Nope, that's right. Okay. Either by agreement or condemnation for the Crittenan Road and Route 17 intersection realignment project. Mr. Manager, please provide the overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. At this time, I will call LJ Hanson, who's at the party, to provide the staff report on this item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. Tonight's my pleasure to talk to you about the next step in the Crittenan Road, Bridge Road Intersection Improvement Project. Tonight, Department of Public Works comes to you seeking to be able to acquire right-of-way so that we can move forward on this project. I thought it'd be appropriate to give a little bit of background about the purpose of the project. I know you all are familiar with this intersection. You've, you've all been through it. You all know how. It's a little bit of a roller coaster. We have the issues with the offset in elevation on the lanes. It's, it's curvy. It just, it was what an old country road matched up to a U.S. highway. That's what we had. And it's, it is time that this road be improved to meet modern standards. So some of the items that we seek to eliminate or to improve in the project is to eliminate issues related to the super-elevated curve, which is that offset in elevation, combine two intersections which currently exist too close to each other, provide dedicated right-turn lanes to and from Crittenan Road, and to increase the capacity turning onto Crittenan Road. And on that item, I want to be a little bit clear. Part of that is to allow for more through traffic on Bridge Road. So it's not that there's this overwhelming influx of traffic that's going to be traveling on Crittenan Road. The more traffic that we can move in a quicker fashion means that there's more through traffic on Bridge Road, and that's, that's certainly something that's going to become, you know, more essential as, as we move, move on in time. And of course, provide signal access for the community of Cedar Point. This is that issue that we spoke of. You have a super-elevated curve, and so we, we see that piece in between. Now, this was recently overlaid. In fact, I think it was overlaid within the last two years, and we can already see the gouges. And this is something that we have repeatedly heard from people that live and commute through this area about the damage that's done to their vehicles as they try and, and move through this intersection. This is a lot better than it used to be. We have a little bit of a limited vision issue as you come north on Crittenan Road, as you approach Bridge Road. You've got a little bit of a, a little bit of a blind curve because of the trees and the narrowness. Again, this is a country road as it approaches a major, or not a major, but as it approaches a U.S. highway. And just an overview from above, some of the intersection issues as it relates to geometry. You've got two reverse curves. So you've got a curve and then a curve going in the opposite direction, and then, of course, the intersection coming from Crittenan Road is also on a curve. So ideally, this is just not geometrically the best design. So to discuss the proposed improvements, I know I've been before counsel before and told you about this project, but just as a reminder, the point of the project is to take the existing Crittenan Road and terminate it here so it will no longer connect where it did previously. The through route will now be to come up and connect with Clubhouse Drive at the intersection with Clubhouse and Bridge, thereby eliminating one intersection, creating one intersection that has, that is signalized and has the necessary features to be able to handle the traffic. And I'll give you a little bit of a blow up on the intersection so I can point out some features. Some of the improvements that we mentioned are, coming north on Crittenan Road is now a slip lane so that it's not required to come to a complete stop at the intersection, wait for the signal. Again, if you're familiar with the movement here, you have to come to a stop. You're on a little bit of an incline, so waiting for vehicles to come usually means you're waiting on, on the signal to clear you. That'll be a slip lane now, which will allow this traffic to move a little easier. As was mentioned, we have two left-hand turn lanes. Again, that's not because there's a huge influx of traffic, but rather because by moving two vehicles at a time around the corner, we can have less signal time dedicated to that movement, meaning there's more signal time to the through movement, which just means that vehicles can move through the intersection faster. Also, as a safety improvement, a dedicated right-turn lane south onto Crittenan Road. With regard to improvements for the north side, there really are none. There was already existing left-hand turn lane, that remains, and there was an existing right-hand turn lane, and that remains. They're not being lengthened. There, there's really no change for those features whatsoever. There are safety improvements as it relates to pedestrians, so there's a multi-use trail here, which today seems excessive, but what we're seeing is that that, what we build today is something we tie to tomorrow. And certainly, when Governor's Point was developed, I, I knew in speaking to the developer, there was some concern about why are we building sidewalk? Well, today, we're tying to it. And I can tell you, in the public hearing process, we heard from a lot of people who live in that area who said, really, really glad to see this feature. This is something that we've been looking forward to. There are some property impacts. There are approximately 2.4 acres of total purchase, and then, that's over an area of about 18.9 acres. There is one full acquisition shown, and that would be for the stormwater management pond. It is not a, there's currently not a residence there. It's not a developed piece of property, but it is a full acquisition. This is a public hearing following my comments, and just if, if approved, I thought you might like to know what the schedule would be. I do have a little comment here contingent upon revenue share schedule. If you recall, in the CIP presentation I did at your last work session, I mentioned that revenue share could potentially be delayed a little bit. It looks very encouraging for us. I'd like to think that this is what's going to happen, but until the CTB makes their official action, which won't happen until next month, I can't guarantee that. But we believe that this is the schedule that we'll be following, assuming that right-of-way authorization is given tonight. We'll be moving to right-of-way acquisition next month. Advertisement for construction would be expected to begin in spring of '22, and construction shortly thereafter. I will be available for questions following the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
Thank you. This public hearing is now open. Will the first speaker please come forward?
Good evening. My name's Jeff Elmore. I live at 2012 Fairway Drive in the Cedar Point subdivision. I'm also the president of Cedar Point Association, and I represent 197 homeowners that live in Cedar Point, plus the Cedar Point Country Club. Our neighborhood sees about 700 car trips a day for residents and approximately 200 to 300 car trips a day to Cedar Point Country Club, more during the summer months. The intersection project I'm personally in favor of, my parents also live in the neighborhood at 8052 Clubhouse, and they are also in favor of the intersection realignment project. It does present a safety issue currently for residents. We did have one resident who had an accident in the intersection this year. Thankfully, she was okay, but it does present a safety issue. So I urge you to move forward with the project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Good evening. My name is Pat America. I live at 9300 Eclipse Drive, and I am here tonight to express concern about the environmental impacts of the stormwater pond that is going to be installed. You all know about the Chukataka Cove development and how supposedly they followed all of the best practices and said that there wasn't anything more that could be done, but the silt drainage has ruined that section of water, and there's no, the wildlife is reduced, the oysters are reduced, and I'm very concerned that without proper oversight, the same thing could happen in the Sleepy Lake area. So I would just like to say that I hope that due diligence is followed as this project is undertaken. And I think the road is actually a good idea, but care has to be taken for the environmental impacts, and I also hope that developers don't use this new intersection to start pushing through developments like at the Bridgeport and all that Shoulder Hill Road mess that's going to be very difficult to get through as things move on. But thank you, and I offer my congratulations to Mr. Duman for his election and to Mr. Moore. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Taroski Fisher. I live at 1512 Sleepy Lake Parkway, which is in the Sleepy Lake subdivision. I've had the opportunity to speak with Denny McBride, who's the board member for the Homeowners Association, and also I read the five-page letter prepared by the board that was submitted to the Public Works Department, and it was prepared by Tom Westfall, who is, has a background in environmental engineering. I also met with Mr. Hanson regarding this project, and he provided a significant amount of details to me about the project. What's significant about, why I'm, I'm really concerned about this and why I'm here today is that my husband and I relive on Sleepy Lake Parkway, and that's one of the fingers of the lake. And actually, where the existing BNP is, is called Cornus Pond, and it's really a BNP, that actually goes under Adams Drive and goes directly into the finger of the lake, which is our backyard. Okay. As I said, I, I spoke with Mr. Hanson, and we reviewed the plans, and my husband and I, we do support this project as proposed, that design. And so, and I just have to follow Ms. America's comments that we just want to make sure that the design is followed on paper when the program, when the project is being implemented. And I thank you. And Linda, thank you for service for all your, you know, time in here in Suffolk. Thank you. And Mr. Duman, welcome as the incoming mayor. Have a great day. Thank you.
My name is John Newhart. I live at 9040 River Crescent, which is in the Cedar Point neighborhood. I think that this is a good design. The reason is that it will give Cedar Point a controlled intersection with a stoplight, which it has not had. We have 179 homes right now, and an additional 70 homes are apparently going to be built at the back of the intersection by McCluskey Development. With the growth of Suffolk, and I've lived here in Cedar Point since 2001, a lot more traffic is now going down Bridge Road, and a lot more can be anticipated. And this has caused problems for the people for Cedar Point getting in and out of Bridge Road at certain times of the day, and there have been accidents with people making mistakes going to the median to turn. So the design, first of all, provides a controlled intersection for Cedar Point. The second thing that's very positive about the design is the current intersection with a light, or the controlled intersection, only serves Crittenan Road and Sleepy Hole. This new design will have a controlled intersection that serves three, three communities. One is Cedar Point, two is Sleepy Hole, and three is Crittenan Road. The third reason that I feel this is a good design is that the elevated curve that Mr. Hanson talked about is a real problem in our area. When tractor-trailer trucks are coming down 17 and making a turn onto Crittenan Road, quite often, they get hung up on that raised lane in the highway. This will eliminate that. That's another plus for it. Lastly, I'd like to point out that the design even has a BNP, a new BNP, to protect, to protect the environment. So I think that the city staff has designed a very nice project here that's going to provide those benefits to the communities out where I live, and I'm happy to see it, after living here for 19 years. I also congratulate Mayor Johnson for her tenure in office and the time that she has spent for the city, and I congratulate Mr. Duman, our new mayor, who has been our councilman and who has come to our homeowner meetings and provided us information about what the city is doing. And he has also brought city staff members who have volunteered their time to come and explain to us what is going on, which we are grateful. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Thomas Westfall. I live at 8759 Adams Drive in Sleepy Lake. You may remember me from two weeks ago. I since have been in contact with Mr. Robert Lewis. He got back to me with a response on the letter of questions the Sleepy Lake community had about the wet pond of the project. We also met yesterday with two of his staff members, Mr. Darrell, Darrell Lewis and Mr. Frank Grubbs. It was a very successful meeting. They answered a lot of my questions and concerns, gave me some great feedback, and they also reassured me about the final design of the project, and they're going to incorporate some things we discussed into the final plans, so the Sleepy Lake community has a vegetated buffer and whatnot. Anyway, I'll spare you the boring details, but I think overall, the wet pond is going to treat stormwater runoff that's flowing from this intersection project, and the design is well-regulated and reducing nutrients from stormwater runoff. However, the primary concern is the construction phase of the project. There are erosion and sediment control procedures and devices that are required and regulated and routinely inspected. However, I myself have observed that these devices do not sufficiently reduce the amount of erosion and sediment coming off of construction projects. Construction projects can take a year or more, and this allows ample time for rainfall to bypass these devices. to bypass these devices if they're not properly maintained and expected—inspected. So I understand Mr. Robert Lewis and his team are doing everything in the requirements to ensure this wet pond meets the design, and this is a great intersection project, but I'm asking a consideration of why not having—implementing a turbidity and dissolved oxygen probe at the discharge of this wet pond during the construction phase so the Sleepy Lake community and the city have a record of what is actually occurring during the construction process. Therefore, if there is a fish kill during the construction phase of this project—if there's a fish kill in Sleepy Lake or other environmental damage—we'll have data to review what the cause was. The city can look at the data and say, okay, well, we've been doing our due diligence. We haven't had any excessive sediment runoff and nutrients from the construction site.
That concludes the time allocated for the speaker.
So anyway, something to consider. I think it—anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. So we have three minutes, so I'll cut that introduction short. My name is Kelly Hengler, and I live at 9345 Eclipse Drive in Suffolk, Virginia, and I want to congratulate all of the public that has come forward to be able to speak about the road project, and thank you, especially to those who made sure that the Sleepy Lake Homeowners Association did get a response. It did take four months. I am going to punctuate that because I have a mirror world for you. We do not oppose when we come forward to ask for the very best to have for our communities. That does not mean in opposition of. However, I'm going to say this, that once again, we have come off the top rope, missing some things. We just did get back a final report from our legal team, from Cultural Heritage Partners, which will be coming forward to the city of Suffolk. The city of Suffolk in all of this time has not, in consideration of this project, considered that since 2002, our community—which is an unincorporated town in Suffolk, Crittenon, which the road Crittenon is named for, okay—is now being truncated and taken from us despite the fact that we did try to collaborate and come to the table and ask for there to be a meeting with our community equally as Cedar Point, okay? Governor's Point did not have such a meeting, nor did Sleepy Lake. But once again, our community, despite making the reach and asking for a direct meeting so that we could fully understand the impacts and actually have a process in a form of grieving because the city of Suffolk has come in and altered this roadway, which is named for our village. All of the other communities that have come in are welcome. We love them, and they love us—Cedar Point, Governor's Point, Sleepy Lake. But at this point, I will have to ask that the city please take into consideration any further alterations, because this is now a type of encroachment. That traffic that is so easily supposed to flow through this new intersection is coming right up against the intersection that in 2008, a study was done with HRPTO through federal and state funding by the request of the city of Suffolk, knowing very well that that traffic is now coming straight for our intersection in Eclipse Drive. There are no public services at the current planned intersection, okay? Zero. We have two churches, over 300 homes, families, okay? A graveyard, a swim club, multiple businesses in this unincorporated town, including a post office. None of those are accommodated with the ability to handle the amount of traffic that is now slipstreaming. Congratulations. Straight down to our intersection. We have tried to do everything we can to get the traffic analysis information so that we could come forward and sit down and ask questions. That is not opposition. That is fact-finding. That is civic duty. So I now say to the city of Suffolk, which has zero plan—and not even in the 2008 corridor study, was there a plan at that time to do Crittenon Road project, and we've not been able to discover how that came to be without there being a counterpoint priority over public safety. We have people have died at the driveways of our community along that same stretch of road from our intersection to the bridge.
That concludes the time allocated.
Thank you very much. Please take this into consideration, and we must ask for a plan immediately to address our intersection. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Do we have any other speakers? This public hearing is closed. Counsel? Councilman Dooman?
Thank you, Mayor. To begin with, I want to thank the speakers for coming forward. This has been a project that we've been talking about in Cedar Point and in neighboring areas for at least six or seven years. I think, obviously, we've talked about the attributes of the project to be able to facilitate the traffic on 17th and realignment. We're just taking one stoplight, moving it down. I always—I want to thank the city manager and his staff, Mr. Lewis in particular, in contacting the Sleepy Lake Homeowners Association, because that was a serious point of concern for them as far as the stormwater management issue was concerned and their concerns about possible damage to their environment. And I received an email that was—a copy of an email that was—that was sent to Mr. Lewis today, and just the last sentence kind of sums it up. It says, "On behalf of the Sleepy Lake Homeowners Association, we have no unanswered concerns and therefore no objections to the project." And that would not have happened without your willingness to answer their questions and your willingness to engage them so they're comfortable with the project. Now it's incumbent upon us, just as some of the concerns are mentioned, that we ensure that all those processes and protections are adhered to so we don't have to deal with issues down the road because, for some reason, things slipped through the crack. And I know—it—and know it's hard to do, especially with construction projects that go on for that period of time. But I want to thank everyone for their involvement, and I believe when this is done, it is going to be an excellent—it is an excellent project, and I think everybody's going to be satisfied with it. And with that being said, I'd like to move for approval.
Councilman Fawcett?
Yes, Mayor. Councilman Dooman covered a lot of territory. Most of us have probably traveled down that roadway, particularly in that intersection, and I have family that live in Cedar Point, and I go to see them, and sometimes it's a little bit tough to get out of that place when the traffic is rolling. Not to say that that curve in the road—I've seen many a truck hung up on that curve. So I think that the city has done a great job putting this project together, so I applaud the city manager and the staff of Public Works and Engineering that have come together. The project is—you know, there's going to be some inconveniences as the project is moving forward. That just comes with the turf, but I think they've tried, and we've looked at it, and they've mitigated as much as they can for the public's concern, and I appreciate the response they have given back. With that, I think it's a great project. I'd like to second the motion to approve the project.
A motion and a second, and I'd just like to add, I think it's a great project, too. Anyone that has driven that stretch as many years as I have, you will see that that bump and curve—if you have a low-profile car, you probably have a few scratches and dents and dings. And I, too, have family in Cedar Point that was in Sleepy Lake, so I understand all of the nuances to the project, and I think it is a great one. It has been many years coming. I think I remember that discussion early on when I came on council, so I, too, think this is going to be a great step forward for that—for that corridor. So with that, I'd ask that we would call the roll.
Councilmember Dooman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Miltier?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you very much. We'll next move to our next public hearing, which is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a helipad on property located at 7250 Harbertown Parkway, zoning map six, parcel 3A, asterisk 2C, asterisk 4. This is account number 306002947, conditional use permit 2020-016. Mr. Manager?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, at this time I'd like to call Mr. David Hanley, Director of Planning and Community Development, to the podium to provide the overview.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager, before you—you do have a conditional use permit request for a helipad that was submitted by Randall Royal, Kimley Horn Associates, applicant on behalf of Dan McCarthy, Vice President of Bon Secours Mercy Health, property owner, in accordance with Section 31 306 and 31 406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit request to establish a helipad on property located at 7250 Harbertown Parkway, zoning map six, parcel 3A, star 2C, star 4. The affected area is further identified as being located in Anspen-Votingboro, Zone MUD Mixed Use Development Overlay District. The 2035 comprehensive plan does the next area as part of the Northern Growth Area Mixed Use Core Use District. Before you—on the map, you see the red sign indicating the facility site. This is—in the area that's hatched next to the interchange, the site for the hospital that's under review right now. This is the total site plan, and the helipad, as you can see, is highlighted down on the corner of the site. The rest of the site is a permitted use in this district and is under staff—staff review at the current time, and the helipad is a conditional use and requires FAA approval, as did the previous one for Centerra out on 17th. At the Plan Commission meeting on October 20th, they recommended that this board approve it by an eight-to-zero vote. I stand to answer any questions at determination of the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
Public hearing is now open. Will the first proponent please come forward?
Evening, Mayor Johnson, members of council. My name is Randy Royal. Business address is Kimley Horn Associates, 4525 Main Street, Virginia Beach. I want to thank Mr. Hanley first and his staff for working with us. It was a pleasant experience, and we appreciate it. Hospital is 142,000 square feet on 19 acres in Harborview, just up the street from the current facilities that Bon Secours has. The intended conditional use permit is an air ambulance service for patients, taking them away from the hospital. It's going to be very, very infrequent, probably a handful of trips per year. It's—somebody needs something more than what they can provide at Bon Secours. They need to fly them to Duke or Johns Hopkins or whatever. That's what it's going to be for. So we've already talked to FAA. We've looked at that. As Mr. Hanley told you, it's over in the northeast corner of the site, away from the residential as much as we can. We have to show a flight path, not over the trees. We have two flight paths coming in, both on the side of the project. I don't have anything to point to here, but it's not going over the trees right beside the highway there. So we've looked at that. We—there's not going to be excess noise, vibration, odor. Should not be a problem to the residents. Mr. Hanley and his staff sent out letters to the adjourners. We also sent out letters to the adjourners explaining to them about the project and gave them the name and contact information of someone with Bon Secours Mercy that they could call. No one contacted him. We haven't heard from anyone yet, but I'm happy to answer questions. Staff recommended approval. Plan and commission recommended approval. Hope you'll see fit to do the same, and I'll stand by for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next proponent, please. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of? Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Sir, would you like a rebuttal period?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. This public hearing is now closed. Councilman Goldberg?
Move for approval, Mayor.
Second.
Councilman Fawcett?
That's all right. Give it to—
Second.
All right. Councilman Ward, second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dooman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Miltier?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now move to our final public hearing, which is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a place of worship small, under 6,000 square feet in Main Sanctuary on property located at 3219 Bridge Road, zoning map 12, parcel 12J, account number 304455100. This is CUP 2020-017. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Again, Mr. Hanley is at the podium to provide the overview.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager, before you—is a conditional use permit request, CUP 2020-017, which was submitted by Lorenzo J. Mallory, Sr. of the Greater Dimensions Kingdom Ministries, on behalf of S. Chris Jones, BCP LLC, property owner, in accordance with Sections 31 306 and 31 406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit request to establish a place of worship small, under 6,000 square feet in the Main Sanctuary on property located at 3219 Bridge Road, zoning map 12, parcel 12J. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Sleepy Hole-Votingboro, Zone B2, General Commercial Zoning District. The 2035 comprehensive plan does the next area as being in the Northern Growth Area Suburban Use District. As before, the red highlight indicates the facility site out on Bridge Road. It is in the Food Lion Shopping Center. It is the old pharmacy that was attached to the eastern wing of the Food Lion. It does share the parking with Food Lion. This is a location showing—the parcel that's under consideration. It is a separate parcel on that map. It doesn't appear as such out in the field, but it is—it's a separate parcel. This is the configuration that we are working with. We—staff is working with the minister to work out the building plans on the alteration. There will be no additions to the outside of the building. It'll all intercur inside in the old pharmacy facility. And then this shows the available parking directly in front, and there is a shared parking agreement with Food Lion. And at the Plan Commission meeting on October 20th, they recommend eight-to-zero in favor of this, and I stand to answer any questions at determination of the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system for this hearing.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
Public hearing is now open. Will the first proponent please come forward?
Good evening to the members of the board, council. I am Lorenzo Mallory, Sr. I live at 1213 Crescent Drive, Smithfield, Virginia. I'm the pastor of Greater Dimensions Ministries here in Suffolk, Virginia. I have pastored here for six years at my previous location at 1589 Bridge Road, Suffolk, Virginia. We were in need of a building suitable to accommodate our growing ministry. Upon meeting Mr. Chris Jones, who couldn't be here this evening, but had informed Councilman Bennett and let him know, Mr. Jones has really been quite instrumental and gone above and beyond to help us to secure a condition of use permit. This building is an excellent fit for our small group of less than 50 people and will aid us in continuing our ministry work in Suffolk, Virginia. Our goal is to help people that are in need in times such as these, and we are excited about this opportunity and would greatly appreciate your positive consideration in this matter, and we thank you in advance and anticipate a positive outcome. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next proponent? Anyone else to speak in favor of? Do we have anyone to speak in opposition? Sir, would you like a five-minute period? This public hearing is now closed. Councilman Fawcett?
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and move for approval.
Vice Mayor?
I second the motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Councilmember Dooman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Miltier?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you very much. We have no ordinances this evening, and we have no resolutions. We do have a staff report, which is the 2021 legislative agenda. Mr. Manager?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. With us this evening is the city's legislative liaison, Mr. Rob Catrin with the firm of Alcady &amp; Fay. Mr. Catrin will provide the presentation to you this evening.
We'll wait just a minute.
I did receive a text that he is here.
Good evening, Mr. Catrin. You've already been introduced.
In Rob's defense, he flew in today and landed at Norfolk about an hour ago, I believe.
Welcome.
How's everyone today? Mr. De Beere, Mayor, members of council. Today, we're going to talk about the draft legislative agenda we put together with staff. I want to thank Randa Katian for all of her amazing help the past few weeks. This is very similar document to one we've had in the past. So as in years past, we've, the first item is fully funding the cost of education. The General Assembly has done, since the recession back in 2009 and 10, the General Assembly's done a pretty good job of increasing funding to K through 12 each and every year. They've also, regarding the lottery funds, they have a provision in there that allows localities, or the school boards actually, to have much more discretion with how they want to spend the lottery funds. We've been very supportive of that as well. The revenue projections for the state are ahead of schedule. I think they budgeted like 1.5%. They pretty much budgeted flat revenue for this current fiscal year, but the revenues have been coming in much more than that. So despite the unemployment and all those things, there are a lot of costs. Unemployment situation, the sales tax has been, the numbers have been very good. So I think the education funding will continue to grow in this coming session. The second item on here on legislative priorities is regarding broadband funding. I know that the city supports broadband a great deal, trying to bring it into neighborhoods where it doesn't currently exist and that sort of thing. One issue that we've had with the way the current system, it's called the VADI grant program, Virginia Telecommunications Initiative VADI grant, is, the way it works is the local government submits a grant request to DHCD and gets reviewed. The locality must have a private sector partner that will ultimately own and operate the resulting infrastructure that grant is for. We have lobbied for some time now that we think, we appreciate the grant opportunities, but locality should be able to own these projects when they're done with them. These are, this is state grant funding that comes, it flows through you to a private sector partner, for instance Charter or Cox or whoever around the state, big and small companies. But in many cases, there's no reason why the locality shouldn't own the resulting grant, the money that the grant is for. You know, most localities already have some level of broadband anyways. They know how to do it. I think there's some distrust among, in fact, I know there's some distrust among the leadership at this program that doesn't think that some localities are sophisticated enough to own the resulting projects. But that can, they can judge that on a case-by-case basis rather than having a blanket prohibition on localities owning these resulting projects. So we strongly support putting this into the legislative priority list for the legislative agenda. The third bullet's regarding Western Tidewater Regional Jail recovery requests for partial exemption. We've talked about this matter for years. I recommend, Mr. Dooman, that we try to meet with Senator Lucas before, like as soon as possible frankly, like way before session to really, she was supportive of our effort last year, but she was so focused on her gambling bill, her casino bill, extremely focused on that last year. And I think for some reason, we met with, we had the superintendent up there, we met with the Senate Finance Committee staff about this, we met with House Finance, House Appropriations Committee staff about this as well, but I think getting Senator Lucas's attention before session gets started and when she's got time to really focus on this issue would be helpful for her. And I don't mean just imply just her, but she is a budget conferee, she's a very senior member of the Senate, and she would be the one frankly who has the juice to get something that's done for us if it can be done at all. But I would recommend that we meet with her as soon as possible. Next slide. The rail line situation here in the city, you all are very aware of it, of course. We want to continue to try to find some relief through the state without it becoming a smart-scale project or something like that necessarily, but we've met with HRTAC regarding the 664 expansion, potentially putting a rail line, one that currently goes through the median, if you, through the middle of the road rather, extending that all the way to Bowers Hill. There's another rail line there that currently exists. If we could connect the rail lines on 664 now to Bauer, down here to Bowers Hill, that would relieve a lot of traffic, train traffic going through the city. It would reroute the trains, they would be able to go around, around most of the neighborhoods. We still have to go through downtown, maybe south of downtown a little bit, but it would get some of the stuff out of the neighborhoods in the north half of Suffolk, if you will. So we're continuing to work on that. The fourth bullet is regarding the Kings Highway Bridge. We met with Senator Lucas about this project last year and their delegates as well, and Senator Cosgrove. They are familiar with the project request. The issue is, if we submit this project as a smart-scale application, it's going to score terribly. And I think it already has scored terribly, but it will score terribly because it's not, the way they grade these applications is regarding, the main, the main one is traffic ingestion. Well, there's no traffic ingestion that we're relieving. It's just, it's just a, it's, the traffic goes around the lake, which, the river rather, which we don't like, but we have to change, we're trying to find a way to change definition of state of good repair so that it would be able to be used to not just renovate a bridge, but rebuild a bridge. Because right now, the language is very specific, it's something, "bridge renovation." Well, that's not really what we're trying to do here because there's no bridge to renovate. So we're trying to find a way to change the, change the, change the definition of the phrase state of good repair so we can try to get it done that way. And then, next slide. That was, that was our topics for the legislative priorities. These are legislative program items. You all have seen these before. Historic preservation tax credits. We want to keep those in the, in the state budget. Opposing the effort to provide exemptions for stormwater fees. We have battled, I think, you know, you never, you never want to say never, but we have, we've defeated bills in the past that would provide for exemptions for stormwater fees for various things like churches, church parking lots, rail airports and their runways. Once you start creating exemptions, they'll never be an end. There will always be people coming back for more. And then the ultimate people who have to pay for those exemptions are the homeowners who don't get exemptions, right? If you start exempting others from making stormwater fees, they still need to raise the money. They'll just have to get it from homeowners. So we're opposing exemptions for stormwater fees. This bullet here, safeguard local government regulatory use, authority on land use. There've been a lot of bills introduced the past, this past year by newer members who must have read about these ideas from California or whatever because they're terrible bills. There's one delegate who introduced a bill to say that you could build a second house on your property without getting a special use permit or anything like that. And he was like, "Well, they do it in California." And we're like, "Doesn't mean it's going to work here." People, if people buy a house in a single, single-family home in a subdivision, they want to know what they're going to get from long-term. They can't, you can't have people build second houses on the lots with, without, you know, neighbors going bananas about it. So we've been pretty strident on these bills and we have a lot of help from VML and BACOM and that sort of thing, but we wanted to be very specific in our agenda to our delegation, letting them know that we oppose these, these bills that reduce your land use authority that you have. It's so important that, you know, you were the local decision makers. You should be able to not have the state come in and tell you with the new bill that you're going to remove a bunch of your authority to manage the property in the city here. Our taxing authority, there have been bills introduced to repeal B-Pole, repeal MNT, all these other, all these other things. There is, they typically get defeated, but we still want to tell the members straight up, we would prefer that you not reduce taxing authority on local governments. And then the next slide. The PCB, TMBL stands for total maximum daily load. This is a thing that's been, this has been our agenda for years, and DEQ keeps saying that they're going to deal with it this year, they're going to deal with it this year. They have never dealt with it, but we keep it in here because we want to make sure that our legislators recognize that if they were to, if DEQ were to do something regarding these PCBs, we do not want it to be an unfunded mandate. It should be polluter pays, not the local governments. The PCBs are coming from old electrical, you know, boxes and stuff like that, and they end up getting into the river or into the soil. It can be extremely expensive to deal with this, so we want to, we want to let our legislators know about that. Opposing unfunded state mandates, every local government in Virginia has opposed to those. There's already 600 in the code right now. Many of them are relating to public education. They don't really impact you per se, but there are always bills coming down through the House and Senate that are dealing with unfunded mandates. We try to kill those frankly whenever we can. And then the dedicated funding source for public transit capital needs, this is a big issue to one of your newer members of the General Assembly. He wanted to try to do some things regarding public transit in the city. I know you're not members of HRT, but there is going to be some efforts to try to find a way to have dedicated funding sources for, they call it rolling stock for buses and that sort of thing. Then we have transportation requests. Now, the General Assembly does not fund transportation projects, as we all know. The someone with transportation board does that through a very elaborate process, but we do want the legislators to know what we, what our, what our needs are. You all have seen these projects before, the Nan's been River Bridge, Kimberly Bridge improvements, New Kings Highway Bridge. These are all expensive projects, frankly, very expensive projects, but they are needed for economic development and traffic congestion purposes. And then regarding the railroad crossings, I know you've got some work being done on one of them now, I believe, one or two of them now, but we want to keep that in front of the legislators as well, that the railroad crossings are problematic to citizens, especially in times when you really have to get across in an emergency or whatever, and for safety purposes as well. So we're looking for, for funding for those sorts of projects too. And there's a couple more, a couple more there. Regarding Bennett's Creek navigability and safety, you're going to move the Corps of Engineers. If there is, if there is a need to dredge it, that's not part of a maintenance schedule that already exists with the Corps of Engineers, there's some talk that earmarks might be coming back in Washington, DC in appropriations bills. I'm not so sure the Senate's going to agree with that, but the House members want to do it. If we needed, if we needed to do something regarding an earmark or something like that to get that project funded, we could certainly pursue that. To adopt the legislative agenda on December 2nd, I will say that I had talked to a couple legislators from the delegation, and they would like to get this as soon as possible. So we can send them a draft even, but if there's, we really don't have legislative requests per se. We have appropriations measures like the WTRJ issues and appropriations. It's a, it would be, it would be a budget request really, but we probably should meet with them as soon as possible. And then, session's starting on the second Wednesday in January, as it does every year. This year, they're going to a 30-day session. The House is going to meet virtually, they're not going to meet in person like this special session they just had. The Senate will probably meet in a science museum like they have been doing. Makes it extremely difficult to effectively lobby, frank with you about that, because there's, they don't do this. There's no way to stand in front of the committee and lobby them frankly. So it'd be a lot of phone calls, a lot of, a lot of emails and just trying to find a way to be aggressive about representing our clients' interests. But that's, and then there's, there'll be a VML day at the Capitol, but it'll be, it'll
First, I want to applaud you on the broadband. We, we need broadband and we, the city needs to own the broadband, so I'm hoping that's what we can push forward with the state and hopefully get their help. But I'm going to make a request and maybe I'm out of line, maybe I'm not, but under the transportation, there's nothing you can do about it, but it just boggles my mind that we don't make 58 a priority on this. If anybody has driven 58, Intermodal Park out on 58 is filled up, the tractor trailer trucks are eating the road up, the ports are constantly expanding. 58 is a 1955, 1960 road that has had very few improvements since it was built, and it will not continue to stand the traffic. What I would like to see is that we start a process of asking the state to review what's going on. This road won't support what's happening on it right now. And we keep, steadily over the last two years, it's just gotten progressively worse. And it's going to be one of the things I'm going to start really pushing for, but for me to look at our, our priorities over here of Godwin Bridge Railway, all these things, and 58's not there, it's mind-boggling to me because the road is in such dire need. Many, many years ago, the state deemed it necessary to put a bypass in, and the bypass was we bought up property to start the bypass and all these things moved forward, then all of a sudden it just went away. So I guess my concern is why did it go away? And why is it, it's more of a problem today than it was back then? So my point is, I just want to see the process start. I want to, I want to be talking about it. And I want the state, I know through the mayor's job, she's, we've got so many priorities in this state, but I don't think people truly understand what a priority 58 is, and it's a priority right now. And if we don't get moving on it, it's not going to happen in the future.
Certainly meant the document to insert that.
Am I, am I out of line, Mayor?
No, you're not. And what I was going to say, Councilman Johnson, is, you know, we can put a lot of things in here, but I think we have to be real, and I think 58 is a real thing.
But if you live on 58...
Oh, no. I agree with you. I think it's very, very important.
It's kind of mind-boggling.
I do think though, when we start to put things in like the Kings Highway Bridge, which we all know is way down the picture. It's so far out, it's not even there. You know, the Godwin Bridge, we've been talking about that from, from, you know, Hampton Roads area for a long time. That, that's going to have to happen, because if you look at Route 17, it's just like 58. It doesn't just affect Suffolk, it affects Isle of Wight, it affects to the, you know, all of the region. 58 the same way. There's been much discussion about the fact that 58 is going to become the way out of Hampton Roads. It's going to become a preferred way out at some point.
But it is now, but it's not supporting the traffic.
It is, but it's not, it's not at that standard.
It's pretty close.
So, no, I'm saying it's not at the standard it needs to be, what you're saying.
Right.
So, I mean, I do think it's worthy of being talked about, very much so, but I think we can't just keep adding projects on. I think we have to decide what is the number one, two, three, and maybe that's it. You know, because we all know you're not going to get but so much.
We could certainly formally ask for, if you want to put this in the agenda, we could certainly ask for a more formal, I hate to call it study, because...
I was going to say planned, you know, and it possibly be something that we'd want to discuss, you'd want to discuss with Kevin Page, with HRTAC first, to see, because there is discussion of 58 and what it will mean to the future.
But there's one stretch of it that is a real problem, and that's what we need to address, and everybody just keeps pushing it down the road, but down the road is here, I'm afraid.
And I think you get the traction because it's from Virginia Beach on out, it's all the way out. So I think that's where the traction comes from. the way out, so I think that's where the traction comes from.
Certainly the PDC could do something as well as H-TAC, I mean, the PDC's where the study money would come from, but certainly the Planning District Commission should certainly take this up as well. It would be very impactful, because again, like you said, Suffolk is part of the, part of the route, but it certainly goes, like you said, it goes all the way to 95 and forever into Western Virginia.
And that's where you're going to get your impetus to get it, to go.
And the ports.
Right.
I mean, the ports have got to have us and it's there, but that's, I've been on council five years and every time I've kept saying it and I, it's at the point now where it is five times worse than it was five times, five years ago. So it's time for us to at least put something on paper that we're looking toward it and let people know we're going to fix it. Thank you.
Councilman DeWitt?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Rob. It's very similar to what we've had last year and the year before, a lot of the projects are the same. I totally, a couple of things that jump out at me is absolutely, we need to maintain the control of our own land use regulations and, I mean, I don't even understand how that could be a point of contention with them. Every city is unique, has its own character and its own issues and it has, you know, they have a vision for what they want their city to use. We absolutely should be able to, you know, we don't need the state to mandate to us how we're going to use our land. I think our citizens do that for us, so absolutely anything I do to support that. I did speak to Delegate Jenkins in regards to the jail, the relief from the state money, the part of the state money that's being remanded back to them and I have no problem, you know, explaining it to Senator Lucas also. Delegate Jones was in much in agreement with it and his being as fiscally conservative as he is, this last iteration of what we wanted, you know, he did not have a concern with, because it does give the state the first shot at X number of dollars. And the money that is being remitted to them, they absolutely cannot budget for because it's contingent strictly upon the number of federal inmates that we have and that number can go to zero tomorrow. The US Marshal Service can call tomorrow and say, starting the next day, we're not going to send you any more federal inmates, we don't want you to house them, we found someplace else to go with them. So that funding can be cut off, so they can't possibly use it for budget purposes. And obviously, you know, we're, you know, because of our efficiency, I mean, because of what we're doing well, you know, we're losing on the other end, so it just doesn't make any sense. But anyhow, as far as the Vatty Grant, it's, what you just brought up, I brought up with the city manager, you know, I was talking to Mr. Moore a couple of weeks ago and I said, why does a private enterprise have to invest in, I believe it was only 20% if I'm not mistaken, I think the grants 80% and the private investment was 20%? You know, why would we want to forfeit the control of that broadband access for the 20%? We are absolutely going counter to what we want to do as a region by providing the regional broadband and we control it. And then if the, if Charter, for example, owns that broadband once it in, then we've defeated the purpose of us opening up Suffolk to more competition so we can get those competitive bids and we can only do that if we own the service. Otherwise Charter, whoever owns it at that point is going to have, you know, a head start on doing the project, so that doesn't make any sense to me either. I mean, they have to seriously understand therefore cities like ourselves that are screaming for more competition, you know, to make it feasible for other entities to come in, we need to control that. If we, I mean, if we can own it for 20%, I think it's a good investment, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but I think it's a hell of an investment. That way we've got a little bit of control, we can open it up to whoever else wants to So, and as far as the transportation projects, you know, referring to what the mayor said, I mean, it's absolutely, we can't throw but so many things out there and what we need to do is prioritize them and then significantly push them, kind of set them up, knock them out one at a time, so I don't know what the process would be there, but, you know, absolutely if we, and what Councilman Johnson said is true also, I mean, you know, 58, you know, as far as an evacuation route and the traffic and the commercial building that we've got going up and that, I mean, it's absolutely, you know, a concern. It's just a matter of, you know, where the money comes from, just like everything else. But I appreciate what you're doing and any way I can help, just pick the phone up and call me.
Manager?
As we look at the draft, this is a draft for you, and if we would like to add Route 58 as a priority, if it's majority council desires, we can do that. Now, I think what we did here with Kings Highway was, I mean, the Kings Highway Bridge was in response to some discussions last year, I believe, and we can leave that on and just finish that effort this year and then, but look at 58 as more of a priority, but I'll leave that to your direction.
Just like Dave, one more thing and I'm sorry to interrupt, but absolutely we need to get the draft, this legislative draft out because I was told that certain people didn't get a copy of it and the session's starting early and they want it in their hand, even if it's in a draft form, you know, we absolutely have to get that out to all the legislators so they get a head start on it. Thanks.
Only thing I'd say about the Kings Highway Bridge is, you know, okay, last year we talked about that, we stick it on. This year we talk about 58, we stick it on. I don't think that looks like we're really prioritizing. I think it looks like every year we're talking about something, we stick it on. Judging by the meetings, we've had the two meetings. We know that it's the probably, well, I don't even know, on the driver's side, there were so few and so little comments, I wouldn't even say there was enough to really calculate. On the Choctaw side, I think you had, there was a bigger group. But again, we're looking at anywhere from what, up to $205 million for a bridge that it, like you said, is from point A to point B. And so I just think we're much smarter along the way and again, you know, this is y'all's call, but if you, we know we've got to have a Godwin Bridge. We know we've got to do that. Route 17 is, you know, Isle of Wight and beyond, it's going to happen sometime, we've got to have it. 58, again, we've got it and we've got to get it better. We've got to get more from that. So my suggestion would be that we really pick a couple of projects and say, this is what we, not what we want, this is what we have to have and go from that and get in there with H-TAC and get in there with the CTV members and explain why. I mean, these people are accessible, we can get to them, you can talk to them and they know, 58 has been discussed, like you said, at PDC, it's been discussed at TPO, it's been discussed at H-TAC. Everybody knows that it is the way out of Hampton Roads. If you take away the other side of the river, we're it. So, you know, it is a high priority item. So, I mean, again, it's up to you all how you want to prioritize, but I just don't think we every, every year decide that we, you put another one on. I think that doesn't look as urgent to people.
But Mayor, my only concern is that if we don't put it on, we're just going to put it off another year and it is a high priority item. I don't, everybody may not think that.
I think maybe you misunderstood. I'm saying 58 would come ahead of the Kings Highway Bridge.
No, it shouldn't. I'm not, I don't, not say that, I'm just saying, but if we don't, I've seen how it works. If we don't start the process now, it's going to be another five years or seven years or 12 years.
But that's exactly what I'm saying. I'm just saying you have to pick, what is the top priorities? What does the most for the city of Suffolk?
Because this road, I'm just saying, because this road has got to be fixed and the state knows it as well, we're more likely to get the funding for it than we are for some of these other things.
I totally agree with you. We're saying the same thing. We are saying the same thing.
But my point is, I'd like to see it on here, for no other reason than to make me feel better.
I totally agree with you.
Let's put it on it.
Councilman Fossett?
Well, you know, looking at these priorities, you know, we've got several projects in the pipeline here, for instance, Shoulders Hill Road intersection, it's going to be a massive project that's moving forward, Cretton Road 17 project. You know, the problem is, is you've got all this traffic that comes off of 664 and goes northbound or southbound, either way you're trying to go, and it's not feeding just Suffolk. It's feeding Isle of Wight, Smithfield going toward the James River. If you take and go out there, I try to tell people this, it's, all this traffic's not coming to the city of Suffolk. You ride out there on the other side, when you get past Eclipse, that small Naasman Bridge there and you get going out there and you start looking, get off the main path and look at the buildings that are out there, we've got major transportation problems just really closed in, 58 being one of them. We go turn trucks over every day out there.
No question.
You know, I get it and, but the thing is, is every one of these projects have some meat to it, it's just, there's no way we're ever going to get there because, I mean, we can't, the state's just not going to have the funding to push it to do all these projects. But I don't have a problem prioritizing if somebody wants to do it, I'm perfectly fine with it, but the thing is, is we better start doing something somewhere because it's getting to the point where you can't move it early in the morning until after nine or at four o'clock in the afternoon until after eight in the evening. It's a nightmare.
Well, to your point of 17, I drove it the other, just to point the, 17 is Suffolk's problem for about four miles. It's just about, not quite four miles of 17. The rest of it goes to Isle of Wight, the rest of it goes, you know, we have a very small but very complicated section of 17.
Up in the middle.
Yeah, but you can't, I mean, you have to look at it as a whole, you have to look at the whole picture of where we're going and how, how does Suffolk get out of this? And it may, it has to get out of it from a regional approach, there's no other, we can't work our way out of it. We can't.
We can't afford to do it.
Yeah, Councilman Goldberg, I know you had your hand up.
Mayor, I did. You know, forevermore, where Suffolk sits compared to Virginia Beach, Norfolk, it comes through us, no matter what, it's got to come through us. The rail lines all came through here for years and years and years and now the roads are there. And I agree with Mr. Johnson, I think we need to put it on the list. We need to get it out there. Let's throw it on it. I don't care if they, we need to put it on the list and get it started, at least getting some activity or some voice on it and some attention to it of some nature. And let's put it out there. It is, it's a, it's a major corridor going out and we need to do it and that's, that's on 58. 17, the same, same issue, same thing, we need to continue to push that, but we need to put these things as our priorities on the list and get them out there and let's talk about it. And we have to, if we have to fight for it, we have to go to Richmond and meet with people, we have to go to Richmond and meet with people and see what we can do.
I guess the question I'm saying is if they look at you and say, what is your priority?
Right, I'm saying.
What is your priority? Are you willing to say the Kings Highway Bridge is still there or are you willing to say 58 Godwin Bridge?
How many priorities? How do we want to look at it? Do we want to put a first priority and then something under it or later for, how do we want to address that? Do we want to stab it and make two or three priorities?
I think if you had two, because 58 and the Godwin Bridge are two very separate pieces. They both fit into the Hampton Roads plan though, they both are a big part of it. I don't think you're saying, well, we want 58, we don't want, I think those two, but I think when you start to dilute it with the Kings Highway Bridge or this or this or that, that's where I think people start to say, okay, they're just putting out a smorgasbord of things here and, you know, and seriously, they're not going to take you as serious.
Mayor. I don't disagree with you at all there. I think that we need to prioritize the main arteries that we have to deal with and the main arteries are.
What is clogging up the city?
Right.
I think that's the question.
Right.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I agree with all of what you're saying, but sitting with the regional boards, H-TAC and all, and the way they sit, and this is with all the mayors and all localities, the whole Tidewater area, and Mayor didn't go into much details on it, but they look at the priorities by the number of vehicles and all that that travel for congestion. And that pot of money comes down to them and they have to distribute that money out to whatever the priorities they have. And I agree, that should be on the list of what we want, but the funding is going to be the key to it because the pot of money don't come to Suffolk, it don't go to Virginia Beach, it comes to a whole group of people that has to make the decision on how these projects will be, the money will be spent. So just like the High Rise Bridge, everybody had to agree with that, just like the Hampton Road Bridge song, they had to agree with that. Then the widening of 64 on up to Williamsburg area. So all that was a play as a part of the regional TAC with the funds coming from Richmond and that's how that was used. I think we need to really get into the port with the number of trucks and the port growing and I don't know if we can tap them in some kind of way to try to make them with all the trucks they're putting out here on the road now, coming through Suffolk, that we can have some kind of connection with the ports, that they would have to step up and help fund 58 because that's where that was tracked, tracked and trailers are going. I just wanted to.
And we, we have been that route and the port is at the table with H-TAC and with TPO, they're always there. I'm not going to tell you they're always there with their wallet out, like, you know, but we, I think we all know that, but the additional piece to what you're saying, Vice Mayor, not only do all the localities, you know, we don't have to all agree, we have to vote and get it to work, but the law actually states what we are created for and what the tax, TAC money can be used for. And it is, number one, is congestion mitigation. That is it. And if we're not, if we're not dealing with congestion mitigation, those funds can't happen. They don't even, they're not even considered and that's a huge chunk of the money. So, you know, you have to look at it that way and you have to look at it as we're a part of a bigger picture and how do we fit in, in a way that we can help our city, as I said, get unclogged.
The question is, with you sitting, in your experience sitting with the H-TAC and so on and so forth, in your mind, we're discussing here between the 58 and the 17, do you feel that that's a viable?
Yeah, I personally think both of those are very high-scoring figures when you look at them. I think they could be very high-scored, very well-done, but I don't see that happening with the Kings Highway Bridge and I don't see that happening with, you know, if you're not meeting certain needs, they're just going to look at you and say, well, where are you, where are you, and I see LJ sitting back there. LJ, if you disagree with me, help me, you know, tell me, but come on up.
Mayor, LJ would like to, he's got a little bit more information on 58 if we could.
Okay. Yeah, we welcome any information we can get.
He's biting his tongue, wasn't he?
He was texting me crazy.
Thank you. I'm sitting back here hopping up and down on my hands trying to not jump up, but I have listened to your conversation and I understand all of, all of the comments and I think really good comments. One thing that Rob touched on was that the legislature does not appropriate funds for transportation and that's important for us to remember as we start talking about where are our priority projects. It's good for us to, I think it's good for us to show where our priorities are and to identify where our priority projects are. The issue on the Kings Highway Bridge was never that it was our number one priority, but more it was a matter of the legislative issue of could we use state of good repair funds for that? And that's what we sought relief from last year from the legislature. They never gave us an answer as to the availability of that funding because it got lost in the minutia about, well, what are you going to build, where's it going to go, that type of thing, which is why we, which is why we felt it was so important to do the study this year, to try and give them an answer so that they could determine whether or not we would be eligible for that funding source. So I, I just hope that you, that you kind of understand that we're not saying the Kings Highway Bridge is our number one priority.
Oh, I know that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let me ask you this though, through the meetings that you had, do you think you got an answer to how important that quarter is?
I've tried really hard to not look at the responses because I don't want to bias myself. I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of people and really all over the gambit on this, you know, some people are adamant, they want to have it on the new alignment, it's the only place that makes sense, why would you do the other thing? Some people are adamant that the only way to get it built would be to put it on the old alignment because it's the only place that's possibly affordable and you're right, those numbers are huge. And some people are just like, we have other priorities, why don't we set this aside and do something different? So I have heard from, from, you know, broad swaths, but I couldn't tell you at this point what the, what the majority opinion is. We hope to get that composition of all of our responses, it hasn't quite closed yet, but once we get that composition of all the responses, we're going to bring it back to you, give you the data, give you the raw, raw numbers, give you a report to look at and then hopefully at that point, we can kind of get a sense for where council sees us moving forward at that point on the Kings Highway Bridge. But I, I just, I wanted to make sure that as we talk about our legislative agenda, that we're focused on the fact that they're not going to cut us a check for 58, they're not going to cut us a check for any of that stuff.
Oh, no, they're not going, clearly they're not, but we have to know how to go about going for those funds through the different channels. going for those funds through the different channels. And I just don't see a channel for the King's Highway Bridge. And I know the state of good repair, I will tell you that in the conversations I had through the region and everybody, everybody was looking like, what are y'all talking about? There's nothing there to repair. So, you know, I just, I don't know.
Is there anything in the pipeline for anything on fifty-eight at all? Do we have, do we have anything going on that I may have missed, or somebody may have missed? And, well, I think you've elaborated on seventeen a little bit with the six-sixty-four realignment to seventeen. But to help what Mr. Johnson's saying, he's got a nightmare up there, which everybody knows is a nightmare. So I want to know, why have we not put something way up in front on the fifty-eight side of the house?
So on Route fifty-eight, VDOT did a corridor analysis, and it starts in Emporia, it comes all the way into Portsmouth, I believe. And we participated in that process with them. They made a number of recommendations. It is not to an interstate standard, which I think is probably what we would all really like to see. But it is a corridor study. It looks at the safety issues, it looks at the intersections, intersection by intersection, makes a number of recommendations. In our smart scale applications that we submitted this year, we do have a project for Route fifty-eight. It's nowhere near enough, I agree with you. It's nowhere near enough, but we do have that project in there. We do think that that's one of the more significant areas. We have, we have had a number of discussions with VDOT about what we think that corridor ought to look like long term. They're not on board with us yet, but we'll keep, we'll keep working at it.
Was that, you're talking about that piece you put in, or you're working with, is that the most devastating part of fifty-eight that he's talking about? I mean, we're not looking going all the way to Franklin, we're just talking about
Excuse me, LJ, if I can just say one thing, I was at all of that. And the truth is, they came to us and told us that this is the most dangerous section of fifty-eight. They know that, and the state knows that, but they're not willing to commit the money because it has to be brought up to interstate standards.
And it has to begin with a regional conversation.
Right.
And that conversation has, you know, in the conversations, it does come up, that that needs to be an interstate standard road.
But you know, our police officers cannot even pull trucks on that road most of the time because there is no, there's nowhere to pull them. It's impossible. That's, we turn trucks over constantly. I'm going to harp on this, guys, until we, somebody's got to do something. And the only reason I want to see it on here, it will stay on here until we fix it because it's got to be fixed at some point. And people will die. And so my point being, these little fixes, I don't, I don't, I just assume they not do that and put the money in fixing the frickin' road. You get to Holland from Franklin, the road's pretty darn good. And then from there, right straight on into the swamp where I am, it's horrible. And we know it's a problem. It's got to be straightened, it's got to be widened, and it needs to be fixed. It's not safe for the people that live out there.
And it has to get to be the regional conversation
Right.
because that's where the money's going to have to come from.
Right. But it's a process. I just want them to know that we are concerned. And I'm not expecting anything tomorrow. But it seems to me if we don't put it in paper, that's where you got to start, right? And I'm working on some people at VDOT, too. I've talked to some people, and I keep on, they're not going to like me when I'm finished, but I'm not going to stop because this is important to me, and it's important to the people of this city, just like seventeen is. Those are the two things we really need.
It has to be a H-TAC conversation.
Right.
That's where it has to go.
Right. I'm sorry, I'll shut up.
No, that's okay. No, not at all. I think it's a great conversation.
Well, I'm passionate because I'm just, it's every day. Ask our police officers in our prior department, they'll tell you how bad it is.
There's no doubt.
Anyway, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I wanted to ask you, is Route seventeen and six-sixty-four on radar? Didn't they discuss that before?
Oh, six-sixty-four is pretty much completed on the peninsula side.
With that traffic on Route seventeen, though, when you get off the bridge.
Well, seventeen is not a part of six-sixty-four.
When you get off, when you get off going down seventeen, with that traffic going towards
He's talking about the Bowers Hill.
Shoulders Hill, Bowers Hill.
Bowers Hill, yeah. Well, Bowers Hill is, has been discussed and been, you know, again, LJ can probably help me here. But, you know, there's a, there's a lot of wetlands issues with Bowers Hill. There are a lot of different things, and they're looking at, LJ, I'll let you take that piece.
Sure. The Bowers Hill study was originally constrained to be right at Bowers Hill. The city of Suffolk and the city of Portsmouth had some objections when it was in the environmental process. We stated that we felt that their analysis was too small and it wasn't going to work. So they sent it back. So there is a project that is proposed to be done, funded through HR TAC. And they've expanded the scope. So now they're, they're expanding it north up to Route seventeen so that they can look at that intersection, look at the intersection at Portsmouth Boulevard and that whole corridor. So that is actually getting wrapped up into that study. What it looks like, we're years away yet. But, but at least, the good news for us on that is that that is HR TAC funded. And that means that there, that's a significant pot of money. And we, as a region, control that. And we, as a region, have expressed that as a priority. So I think that's a good news story. We don't have that same level of comfort on fifty-eight, Councilman Johnson. And that's, that's the problem is, HR TAC has to be limited to congestion-related projects. And Route fifty-eight, while it's a safety issue and there's a lot of traffic on it, it's not congestion. In other words, it's not stopped.
It's coming, it's coming.
And another thing, I agree with Councilman, he said that maybe we got to make more noise. I mean, you don't make a priority, you got to make some more noise. We either get in front of them, or they come here, we got to, about fifty-eight it is, kind of, you know, I have traveled at a certain time. And like you said, them trucks and everything coming out of there, and the traffic, you know, when you have accidents, you know, you really all messed up. But if some type of way we can get behind Councilman Johnson with this, I think we should.
Duman?
Thank you, Mayor. You just kind of bring me up to speed a little bit. I know from a regional standpoint, the smart scale analysis has, is a huge factor.
Well, smart scale isn't, I mean, H-TAC actually applies for smart scale, too. Like, we applied for it for HRBT, and we got a chunk. So, but when you do that, again, the H-TAC projects are taking some of that smart scale money, and they're going to beat out some of these other projects because of how well they score. The score is the smart scale issue. The other thing is, though, smart scale money is going down in numbers. It's not going up. So that's not encouraging. So anything we do that we can do regionally, and we can do through H-TAC, and like you're talking about Bowers Hill, and we're talking years away, we're going to all be dead and gone when we're talking this. But, you know, when you, sorry, but, you know, but when you go to Bowers Hill, the next, the next common sense way is to work, because we know the monitor Merrimack's getting older, too. So we still have to work that way. You know, none of this ends. It just doesn't end. You just keep going to get these pieces out. Now seventeen is arterial, it's not a part of that H-TAC circle. But the goal or the thought, you know, in a regional basis, is if we get the big piece right, then maybe we can start working toward, going back to the General Assembly, again, this would be a real, you know, Richmond thing, to get them to let us use some of those dollars on arterial roads that also take congestion out of the region. Because the idea is, we unlock the region. You talk about the ports, if we can't get the goods out, then, you know, it doesn't work.
Seventeen or fifty-eight have a smart scale rating?
No.
That's something we applied for, LJ? I heard you kind of allude to that.
I don't think
Yes, sir. We did, we applied. We haven't got no scores yet. Those won't come through until
We've applied on both, both of those projects.
I'm sorry?
Both of those projects, seventeen and fifty-eight?
Yes.
We don't have a score now.
We don't have a score.
The applications have been submitted on part of the city.
Okay, so if the application is submitted on behalf of the city on seventeen and fifty-eight, then really to make a case, you'd almost have to wait for that smart scale number to come in, to see how it does as far as mitigation and safety in the other three or four issues.
The money we used on fifty-eight was smart scale money, right?
Or the, yes, for the existing project, yes, the three miles that we're getting ready to start this month, next month. Yes, that money is smart scale funded. But the additional smart scale application that I was referring to, that is out towards the Village of Holland, that's an application at this point. Route seventeen, from the, the ending of the Route seventeen Shoulders Hill intersection project over to Harborview is another smart scale application project. And then we also had two on Route ten.
So from Rob's point, I mean, and what the mayor said, I mean, if you were to pick a project, which one has, or which, would it be seventeen and fifty-eight have the, have the best chance of succeeding? Because you need the regional support to make it happen.
On those two, yes, absolutely.
On those two projects.
Absolutely.
The King's Highway Bridge, you know, you're saying that was coming out of a different pot of money anyhow. We're going not through the same process, but a state of good repair funds?
Again, again, the point I hope I can make is, and Rob alluded to this, the Commonwealth Transportation Board, they hold the purse strings for transportation dollars, whether it's smart scale, revenue share, any of those types of funding mechanisms. The General Assembly, by and large, can allocate more money to transportation, to the Commonwealth Transportation Board, but they don't pick projects. And that's, that's a big part of what the Commonwealth Transportation Board, the smart scale process, all of that was to take the politics out of how money got allocated to projects. So we can certainly identify where our priorities are. We should always advocate for additional funding to transportation, my public works biased there. But we should always advocate for more work, more money for transportation products, projects. But ultimately, the General Assembly doesn't pick the projects. What we specifically asked for on the King's Highway Bridge was to seek relief, to get them to go to VDOT and allow us to use a pot of funding that VDOT was claiming that we weren't eligible for. And that's, that was the whole difference and why we put the King's Highway Bridge at a priority in our legislative agenda, because we were seeking a legislative solution. Does that help?
And based on what you said, and, I mean, I've been listening to comments on the King's Highway Bridge forever because, you know, it's kind of, my peeps on that side, Roger's got some peeps on the other side, but the peeps on the other side, half of them don't want it because they don't like the traffic, you know, and they're already on the other side. This is chuck-a-tuck people that want to be able to get to the other side without taking, but with that being said, it seems to me that the, the only logical thing to ask for would be the least, if we were going to ask for anything, would be the least expensive, which would be to put it back at thirty-five feet at the existing location, which eliminates the environmental issues, the abutments, whatever that's already in there. And it brings the cost down a hundred million dollars or so, I mean, as long as we're throwing money around. So, yeah, I mean, I really, I mean, I'm not saying, I don't appreciate everybody's input, but realistically speaking, a sixty-five-foot span on a five-mile road, I mean, the mayor said we'd be dead, my kids would be dead, my grandkids would be dead before that happens. So, I mean, realistically speaking, I mean, everybody's going to be dead. I just, I don't, I think we should ask for what's as feasible as possible. And it's not, where it doesn't compete with fifty-eight, it doesn't compete with seventeen, because as much as I'd miss the King's Highway Bridge, I'd miss it more than seventeen because I want to go across King's Highway Bridge more than I do seventeen. But the best situation for the city is going to be to solve the seventeen issue and the fifty-eight issue. And I don't think there's any argument about that. And it's also the best thing as far as trying to procure the money for it. So the King's Highway Bridge could stay in there as long as it's not competing with seventeen and fifty-eight and any of the other projects. So it doesn't look like we're just chunking everything out there because it's a different case.
But I would tell you with regard, I'm sorry.
Did they, did you not say that both of those were in for a scale grading?
A smart scale project, yes, sir.
So
But don't think they're going to be totally fixed with the smart scale rating.
I'm just saying, if you had, had the grades on what was the highest grade, wouldn't it make sense to go after the highest grade one as much as you can? In other words, you put that one in front of the one that didn't scale as high, whether it be seventeen or
If I could, maybe, LJ, I think what you're trying to tell us is that on, if we're going to put it in the legislative package, it doesn't really matter because it's not where the money comes from. Is that what we're fairly saying?
Yes, ma'am.
We'd like to see this happen, but this is not how it's going to happen. And I think we all know that. Because when you talk about CTB, even HRBT, is we're getting ready to put the shovels in the ground. We still had to wait for the CTB to approve. I mean, CTB is, is the be-all and the end-all at the end of the day. So, you know, it, it is a very complicated issue.
I think as it relates to your legislative agenda, ma'am, I would suggest that we put those, we put those priority projects in. And we can list several, I think that's appropriate to say that the city of Suffolk is a communication or a transportation hub that is critical to the success of the port and to the region, and that these are projects that we know that are out there. We urge the General Assembly to continue to fund transportation projects. The specific issue on the King's Highway is just that one, that one element is, can we be eligible to use that, that type of funding? With regard to your question, Mr. Duman, that there is no competition between King's Highway and the other two projects because King's Highway didn't get submitted as a smart scale project.
It's not a project. Yeah.
So why can't we throw those two on there? Why don't we throw fifty-eight? And seventeen's already on, I believe.
Well, you can put fifty-eight on there. There's no reason not to.
I'd put fifty-eight on there. At least it's something to talk about, if nothing else, it gets some
That's all I want.
Thank everybody for putting fifty-eight on there.
And I'll just say, you know, I'm not going to be here. So from a regional standpoint, you're going to have to really be at the table and say, this is what has to happen for your city. You're going to have to do it, and you're going to have to repeat it every time you go.
And also, I would point out, informing the legislators what our smart scale project applications were is very helpful to them. They would probably like to know that because they probably don't know. So including those in our legislative agenda would be informational for them and very helpful. I would also point out that the General Assembly just passed, they did raise taxes on transportation this past year. They delayed the effective date until we got out of this, out of past this COVID thing. But they had raised taxes on transportation, the gas tax. I know that driver miles are way down because of the pandemic and that sort of thing, but it'll pick back up eventually. But, so there's some, there's some potential relief in the future. But, yeah, regarding fifty-eight issues, that's a very, very regional PDC-related thing. And it would definitely require, it's a heavy lift. I'm not, you know, it's obviously a very heavy lift. And I, I came to Virginia the first time in nineteen ninety-one. I drove down from ninety-five to Virginia Beach. The road hasn't changed very much since then, by the way. Did four lane some of it, that wasn't four lane before. But, yes, it's, needs to be updated.
Okay, so we're going to adjust the priorities to add fifty-eight? Is that where?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's say do that. And also, as Rob just mentioned, go ahead and have LJ insert into that document somewhere.
But we have them? Did you say when we would have it?
Well, did he have the applications in?
We have the applications, but we don't have the scores.
Right.
The scores are released, like you said, January or February. It's, and typically what the, what the CTB does, they say, here's how much money your region gets. They draw a line, they go down the projects, they draw a line, all these projects above this, get funded, all the projects below it do not.
Exactly right.
And it's really not a whole lot of horse trading over the which ones get it. It's all about the numbers.
Whoever does the scaling.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman, we will beef up some of the languages, as you've indicated, on the transportation.
Any other questions of Mr. Katrin?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
But you're glad to be leaving.
Are you asking me?
He was asleep back there to begin with.
We'll next move to motions. We have a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, December second at four PM unless canceled. Councilman Fawcett? We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Duman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Moteer? Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Do we have any non-agenda speakers this evening?
No, Mayor Johnson.
Then we'll move on to new business. I don't believe we have any additions to tonight's agenda?
No, ma'am.
I have something I'd like to bring up on new business, Mayor. On the study, not study, for our assessor and our HR, Ms. Robbie, as she had been, got some applicants, very good applicants, I think we need to give her direction on how we want to move forward with that, as far as the interviews and whatnot. And I would ask, if it's okay, if she would come and sort of give us an overview of what she has. And that way, we can give her a direction of what we would like to see her do.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, and City Manager, good evening. Tonight, I stand before you to ask for guidance on what you would like to do next with the vacant city assessor position. The position was posted for thirty days and has now closed, closed on November the fifteenth. We do have eight qualified candidates that applied. The city, and I wanted to make a present, or I'm sorry, make a recommendation to you this evening. The city of Suffolk has the ability to do what's called video interviewing. And in video interviewing, it's a one-way process where the candidate actually video interviewing, it's a one-way process where the candidate actually records his or her responses to specific questions using any type of smart device. Once the candidate finishes their questions, that information is forwarded back to us, and then we can watch the responses. The videos are anywhere from 10 minutes to 20 minutes at most. It is our recommendation that council consider using video interviewing technology, because it offers a couple of advantages. The first, it gives you, it gives you the ability to hear and see candidates, understand their experience based on the types of questions, and you can do that in a short period of time. When you do traditional interviewing or bringing everyone on site, you would have to schedule, well, typically you schedule at least an hour for each candidate. In video interviewing, you pretty much go through the same process in about 15 to 20 minutes, so it really cuts down your time on screening. It also allows for us to be cognizant of safe distancing. You know, in the times of COVID-19, we tried to create safe distancing as much as we possibly can, and this has been a platform that many organizations, including the City of Suffolk, uses to do that. That is option one, and certainly option two would be to look at each candidate separately. The candidate pool is exceptional, it actually is, and I'm very proud of the candidate pool, because initially I thought, I think the initial thoughts were that we may not get candidates, but boy, were we wrong. We got some really great candidates. So that is what I'd like to bring to you this evening. I certainly need your guidance and direction on what you would like to do next.
Mayor, I think maybe we need to look at the whole council, come together with a special meeting where we could all sit and see the interviews or do the interviews together, where in that it wouldn't be any second guessing, everybody would have the same opportunity to be able to.
Say them virtually?
Virtually, yes. That's what I'm saying, I mean, that's up to the council where they want to do it, so.
Councilman Dooman?
I think, Robin, if what you're saying, that, I like the idea, the video conferencing, that's done, either you ask the questions, we don't even need to be there, everybody gets the same set of questions.
That's correct.
They answer it on a video, so we can look at them all at our leisure along with the resumes, and then you could pick out, of the ones we look at video-wise, you pick out the best three or four, however many, then you bring them in for an actual interview.
That is correct, that's exactly what you're saying.
And I mean, I think that's an awesome process, because everybody's on a level playing field, you know, they're answering the same questions, you know, they're not looking at anybody, so they're not, it's just, these are what questions we're going to ask you, give us the answers, and then see who impresses us, and if we get a consensus, you bring in two or three or whatever, and go through the whole process. I like that a lot.
Do you have a timeline that you're looking at?
It will really depend on your meeting. I would like to, if council approves, I would like to send out the video interview invite to all candidates by Friday, to give them over the Thanksgiving holiday to complete it, and then send it back. So we would be ready by at least the 1st of December for you to review it.
Councilman Fawcett?
You said you had approximately eight?
Eight.
So I would be interested in seeing all eight resumes that you have at one given time, either beforehand or whatever. I just don't like the idea of going in and sitting in a room with a virtual interview, not even knowing anything about the person, and then trying to flip through their resume while we're paying attention to this. I mean, I don't have a problem with the way Mike.
I mean, what I'm saying, you don't do that.
He said the same thing about the company.
I mean, you're going to see all eight of them.
Right.
It's just kind of a.
I want to, I just want to see all eight of the resumes prior to the.
You get them all.
But you will.
You'll have the interview.
We get them all, I'm good.
You get them in the interview.
And both, yeah.
Then you pick the top three or whatever.
We'll get everything, because keep in mind, they only have 15 minutes to impress you, so what's on their, so you'll see what's on their paper, as well as you'll see them, you know, on the screen, so you would have both pieces.
City Attorney, question for you, if we doing, going through this process, is that should be done in closed, where it's not, where it cannot be made public until?
I think it can.
Mr. Vice Mayor, you have to decide which way you all want to do it. If all of you all are going to look at one time, so you all can come to a consensus as to how many you want to then tell the HR director to invite back for an actual interview, if you do it all at one time, you're able to go into closed session, because that's specifically for the discussion of candidates. That would require you to either do it on a day that you already have counsel, which if we're talking about eight at about 15 to 20 minutes, we're talking about at least two hours, then you would have to schedule a special meeting in which you all will all come, sit in one place, look at them all, then discuss who you want to be your finalists, and then advise the HR director of where you, who you want, and then also establish whether or not you want to have a special meeting to interview whatever number that you are going to do or do it on an actual council meeting night. The other option that I think has been brought forth is that you all would do it individually. If you all do it individually, you would then have to still be able to give the HR director of what does it mean if one council member says, I like 1, 3, and 6, and another council member says, I like 2, 5, and 4, and we might end up right being back with eight candidates. So you still have to come up with a way of narrowing it down if you all are not going to be in the same room making a decision together as to who would be the finalists.
Okay, that's really why I'm saying, I think it's better if we all would be in the room at the same time, so we wouldn't have to go through that.
Because otherwise, if everybody looks at it on their own, like you said, you might say 1, 3, 5, Mike might say 2, 6, and 8, and you might never get to the top three or four.
I would like us to do it in a special session, not at a council night, because we're getting two meetings coming up, and usually they're pretty busy toward the end of the year here, and it would be much more convenient, probably, and relaxable for us to see it without having a council meeting on top of it either before or afterwards. It's, I would say have a day we pick and go into a closed session, do what we got to do, and then if we got to come back for the top three in a different day on a closed session, that's cool.
So under those, under that guidance, what the HR director would probably do is give you all the closing date in which she would give the applicants time to submit their video. If it's going to be before the next meeting, or you all are thinking about coming together and looking at those videos before the next meeting, it would be better to set that special meeting date tonight, so we do not have to do all the extra steps of setting a special meeting outside of a council meeting, which causes more notice and a lot, a few more technicalities to make sure we've met the code requirements for a special meeting.
The Mayor, the, in doing that, I mean, our next meeting is December the 2nd.
2nd.
So if we wait till after Thanksgiving to get the material in, we'll probably not have time to have a special meeting before the 2nd, I would think. It'd have to come after the 2nd. Time-wise, what do you need?
Yeah, what was your, what was your timeline?
My timeline is to send them, send them out Friday, so that people would use the holiday break to actually create their mini-videos and get those back to us by close of business on November the 30th, that Monday. So then, I know that Wednesday, we do meet, I mean, you all do meet, so I don't know what that means for you all.
But on a council day?
Well, at this one, looking at the videos, Councilman Fawcett, that's not doing, that's going over the, looking at the videos, right?
Yes, sir.
So we're not doing, in the interview, just looking at the candidates to choose. Right, 15 or 20-minute seats, so.
What I was going to say, I don't, I don't see the downside of sending it to everybody individually, and when we go to the meeting, put down your top three, hand it to the mayor, and she, and if five of us like number one, and six of us like number two, and five of us like number three, we're going to have to look at the other ones.
Will you send her choose the top three?
I mean, I'm just saying, if you could do the top three or top four, if it comes out like that, just write down the whatever, hand it to the mayor, and which, these are the ones, these are my top four, your top four, your top four, and you put a little tit mark, and if three of them jump up at the top, then we only have to look at the other five, because you're talking about, for the first time, look at eight different interviews, talk about the eight different interviews, talk about why you like number one, why you like number three, why you don't like number eight, we'll be there for a week trying to figure it out. Do it in your own time, if it takes you an hour to look through them, or if it takes you five hours to look through them and get, set in your head which ones are the best three or four, and put it on a piece of paper. Now, in the unlikely event it comes back and everybody got three of them right, everybody got two of them, but I honestly believe that that won't be the case. There's going to be some that rise to the top, you know, at least half of them, and I think we can start with some type of consensus that way, instead of looking at eight people. I mean, I just looked at what we went through trying to talk to two people to come up with something, you know, so I just think that that would streamline the process. I don't know, what do you, what do you think, Robin?
I do, I do think it streamlines, it will streamline the process, and you do have the ability to do that. I do have the ability to just send all of them to all of you to an email address, and you can look at them, and in fact, you can break them on the, on the platform, and then we can give all of that information to the mayor, so that she can see exactly who's at the top of the list and who isn't, and certainly we can share that information.
Okay. I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
This is serious personnel issue stuff, right?
Yes.
Should it really be flipped out on eight emails?
If you, as a screen, you're screening interviews, you're not really going to see confidential information?
We're not going to see their names, we're not going to see any of that?
We can block their names if you so choose, and we can choose not to ask them the, you know, the question, please tell us about yourself. However, I can tell you that some of the people you will recognize.
I don't have any problem with the names, if it's not anything legal, with that way you can do some background checking.
I was going to say, can I ask the city attorney, because I don't, I'm not real comfortable with that process.
Okay, well, I, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I don't think there is a specific legal issue, however, if something comes out, and I'm not sure what questions that she will ask, the potential for what's, I don't know the technical term, of hacking going into people's individual emails, as opposed to being here in the city where they have security, they have all of these firewall's and all of that, where supposedly it would not be breached, would be the most secure way. Additionally, I think in my small conversation with the HR director, the process for selection to assist in consistency and should we be challenged, would be something similar to, I don't know, support system.
Correct.
So this idea of who the top people are is not just necessarily somebody saying, this is my top, it would be, it was a 1 to 10, everybody got over, and 8 or whatever, that will give some consistency into how the persons were selected. But I know that's, I just added that, because I was trying to get that in, but as far as sending it out to individual emails, the more you send out, the less secure it is with you sending it to, some people use their personal email addresses, some people use their actual city email address, but when it comes to doing your breach in a, the most secure way, is always to use the city system.
Might I, might I offer asking the candidates, or to adjust the calendar, so asking the candidates to have, to send it out on Friday the 20th, and asking the candidates to return their videos to me by Sunday the 29th, and then on Monday the 30th, if possible, could we get together, if that's where we're headed, on the 30th of November, maybe get together and look at the videos.
Can I, just one other thought from an HR perspective?
Yes, ma'am.
We have eight candidates.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you feel that all eight are equal?
Not necessarily equal, but some offer experience and stronger experience in leadership, and some may offer stronger experience in actual assessing.
Where I was going with it, it, you know, and this is just a thought, but I know in some of the interview processes that I've worked with over the years, and not just government, but the phase one was done by the HR director, and you would have brought us back, say, four, three, four, whatever, and then we would go from there?
Typically, I would screen down, but in this particular case, the reason why I'm standing before you tonight is because all eight of the candidates do offer something. They do offer skills that I feel like all of you should have an opportunity to see, because if I screen based on the, based on limited criteria from the job posting, it may not be what you all expect or need. So that's why I thought it would be best to make the recommendation to provide all eight candidates to you.
Mayor, might I propose that we do exactly like Robin said and come on the 30th at evening, that's on, that's on a Monday evening? It would suit me better, I would rather do it as a group, I think we'd be more, it would work better, in my opinion.
What time of day?
Like, well, whatever time we, if Monday night is good for everyone.
I mean, I'm just, I can do it all anytime during the day, I don't care.
That's the 30th, Monday evening, Monday afternoon, I'm available as well, but I think that's a better proposal to start this process.
All right, I agree. This is going to go more than two hours.
I just want to say, if we do it that way, are we going to sit among ourselves and discuss it together?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, I mean, I agree with that.
Yes.
Should it be individual and give out numbers? I'd rather just discuss it ourselves, because we have picked the city manager that we want, and we all be on the same accord.
This is the assessor.
Assessor.
Assessor, okay, I mean, I'm sorry, we be on the same accord.
But it's good practice for the next one that you're going to do.
That's good practice, that's what I'm saying, that's.
Well, and honestly, I mean, this isn't a small, none of this is small stuff, so, you know, it's going to take some time, and I think we all know that.
We don't want to rush this thing, I mean, we want to be thorough, and I think looking at all eight candidates, everybody seeing the same thing, seeing the questions, and then we boil it down, I think is a good method. We should be able to sit in the room for however long it takes to get it right.
I'll offer a motion that we will meet 5 o'clock on the 30th, 4:30, 5 o'clock, 4:30. How much time you think we need?
Three hours.
You're going to need more than a couple hours.
I do recommend earlier, I, my assumption is that you will have robust conversations, so.
I have one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
I guess this platform would not allow for us to ask a follow-up question?
No, because it's a one-way interview, meaning that the candidate will actually answer the questions.
Okay, so when we get to the final whatever number?
Yes.
Could we do like a pod interview if they, if they choose not to come here? Could we do like a pod thing where we could ask them questions back and forth?
Absolutely, absolutely. This is really just to pare down your list. We can set the expectation with every candidate that the final three people will be on-site for actual interviews. We can certainly do that, if that's what you all want to do, or we can do a webex. We have done that as well.
Does this council have a goal for when you want this person to be chosen?
I just, well, I don't, I would just want to see what the first level brings us first, and then we can decide.
I'm just asking, because if, you know, if we, if we're going to drop it to three or four, I would, I would think they're going to anticipate that we're going to do something reasonably soon again.
I would say we would continue, once we get the information, then we would continue on, not sit back and waste time, just continue on until we make the selection.
We want to do the interviews on the 30th with the ultimate goal to leave with three or four candidates that come in, that'll be the goal.
Exactly.
Right.
As long as we get a consensus of the best three or four, and then they'll come in.
Then we can pick a date for the rest.
Right.
Have we file up after that?
Right.
Right, and then we get them in for an interview.
After that.
But you're going to have to figure four to four and a half hours, you get eight people, 20 minutes, that's 160 minutes, it's just. And you're going to talk about eight people, and everybody's opinion, better bring a lunch.
I'd say we come in like 1 o'clock in the afternoon.
Have we determined a time that we're doing this?
You may want to start earlier, is what I'm saying.
I suggest one and go until we're finished, getting through all eight virtuals, and then get it down to the three. and then get it down to the three.
Might I ask, in some instances, in regards to the video, you're going to give them a number of questions. Is there, I don't, I know nothing would be legally impossible, that we could make those no longer than 50, don't give the candidate more than, whatever amount of time they want. We set and say that at 15 minutes, which is another way of understanding people's time management, that we set that the people not speak. Do you all have that ability?
The system does allow us to limit the amount, the response time. So if, if you say that the response can be no longer than three minutes, they actually know that so that they have the time to really craft an answer. And then when they're ready to give the answer, they press record and they give their answer. So we ask them to be succinct but thorough in their response.
Mayor, I recommend we come at 1:00 on the 30th.
All right, is that a motion?
Second.
Is there a motion?
So, Councilmember Goldberg, Councilmember Ward, is that where we're rolling here? You said the major and the second?
Good.
Okay, first.
Doesn't matter, roll.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dooman?
Luckily, yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Milteer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you very much. I hope we didn't make that more difficult than it did.
No, ma'am.
And we're going to do eight interviews.
Yeah. We just made it more difficult, for sure.
That's going to be real fun.
All right, any other new business?
No, we go home.
If not, we'll turn to announcements and comments, and we'll ask community and community relations director Diana Klink to come forward.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. As we heard from Teresa Erz earlier this evening, we've got two very special holiday events to remind you of coming up soon. The 2020 Suffolk Holiday Season begins Friday, November 20th, 2020, with a hometown kickoff. This year's Grand Illumination Ceremony will take place virtually on the City of Suffolk YouTube channel. The virtual event will begin with a message from Mayor Lyndsay T. Johnson, followed by a performance by The King's Ringers, a Handville Choir from Suffolk Christian Church, and will conclude with the lighting of our 32-foot holiday tree. Folks can watch it live on November 20th, beginning at 6:00 p.m. on the city's YouTube channel, as well as municipal channel 190. Good things come in little packages. Enjoy a sprinkle of holiday cheer at the inaugural Suffolk Festival of Lights at Sleepy Hole Park. This drive-through light display will be again, excuse me, will open beginning Friday, November 20th, through Wednesday, December 30th, from 5:30 to 9:30 nightly. The display will be closed on Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Eve, and Christmas Day. Folks can view an exhibit of five holiday light themes from the warmth and comfort of their car at the quaint Festival of Lights' drive-through display at Suffolk Sleepy Hole Park, located at 4616 Sleepy Hole Road. The event is free and open to the public, and additional light-themed displays will be added each year moving forward to further enhance this festive experience. Keep Suffolk Beautiful is hosting a fall recycling drive and tire amnesty day on Saturday, November 21st, at a new location. The event will be held at the Public Works Operations Facility at 800 Carolina Road from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. Excuse me. They are excited to be partnering this year with For Kids, an organization that provides services to families and children experiencing homelessness and poverty in southeastern Virginia. Residents dropping off unwanted recyclables can help support this worthy local charity with a non-perishable food or toiletry donation. All who attend are asked to wear masks and observe social distancing as they unload their vehicles. The event will provide for the recycling of a variety of items, including tires, batteries, household hazardous waste, electronics, and more, including document shredding. The recycling drive is for Suffolk residents only, with ID being required for bringing household hazardous waste and tires. For more information, you can contact the litter control page on the city's website or call 514-7604 for additional information. As Dr. Wagner noted earlier this evening, the City of Suffolk, in partnership with the Western Tidewater Health District, will be providing a free community COVID-19 testing event on Thursday, December 3rd, at the Health and Human Services Building parking lot, located at 135 Hall Avenue, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. or until tests run out. Testing is for any individual, including children, who comes to the testing site on a first-come, first-served basis. Residents who wish to be tested are encouraged to either drive up to the testing site or to walk up directly. All testing offered at these locations is free. Social distancing and the walk-up portion of the facility will be required, and in accordance with the recent expansion of Governor Ralph Northam's mask mandate, the wearing of face masks for those over the age of five will also be required. The test are a nasopharyngeal swab that tests for current presence of the virus. Asymptomatic carriers may test positive if they have the virus. This is not an antibody test, and unless you currently have the virus, cannot tell if you have been previously exposed to it. Test results will be provided within three to four business days. Those testing positive will be contacted by phone. Those testing negative will be sent results via U.S. mail for the address provided. For more information, our citizens can call 514-4700. Interim City Manager Albert Moore recently made several appointments to the city's administrative staff. Kevin Hughes, formerly the Director of Economic Development, has been appointed as Acting Deputy City Manager effective Thursday, November 12th. Kevin was named the Director of the Suffolk Department of Economic Development in February 2010. Hughes first joined the Suffolk team in 2005 as a Senior Business Development Manager, and to date has assisted over 500 projects totaling over $1 billion in capital investment and over 7,000 new jobs in the City of Suffolk. Gregory Byrd, formerly the Assistant Director of Economic Development, has been appointed Acting Director of Economic Development effective Thursday, November 12th. Greg was hired as the City of Suffolk's Assistant Director for Economic Development in April 2007. Upon the retirement of Debbie George, Chief of Staff, effective December 31st, Aziz Felder, currently the Director of Social Services, has been appointed as Acting Chief of Staff effective February 1st, excuse me, January 1st, 2021. Aziz has served as the Director of the Suffolk Department of Social Services since June of 2013. Harry Cromer, currently the Assistant Director of Social Services, has been appointed Acting Director of Social Services effective Friday, January 1st, 2021. Harry has served as the Assistant Director of Financial Services at the Suffolk Department of Social Services since October of 2013. In observance of Thanksgiving, City of Suffolk offices will close at noon on Wednesday, November 25th, and remain closed Thursday, November 26th, and Friday, November 27th. Normal operations will resume on Monday, November 30th, at 8:30 a.m. Please note, however, that the majority of City of Suffolk facilities, as well as the Treasurer's Office and the Commissioner of the Revenue's Office inside City Hall, and their satellite offices at the Norfolk Suffolk Library, remain closed to the public until further notice due to the impacts of COVID-19. Trash regularly scheduled for pickup on Thursday, the 26th, will be collected on Friday, the 27th. Trash regularly scheduled for pickup on November 27th will be collected on Saturday, November 28th. TFC Recycling will also follow the holiday schedule, with the Thursday, November 26th regular recycling routes being collected on Friday, November 27th, and the Friday, November 27th routes being collected on Saturday, the 28th. The Suffolk Department of Public Works reminds you that trash must be placed at curbside no later than 7:00 a.m. on the day of collection. Businesses located in the downtown Business Overlay District will have their collection day run on the regular schedule on Friday, the 27th. For more information, of course, you can contact our Public Works Department at 514-7630. Suffolk Transit will not be in operation on Thursday, the 26th, due to the holiday. Suffolk Transit will run as scheduled on Wednesday, November 25th, Friday, the 27th, and Saturday, the 28th. And we leave you with the many ways we reach out to keep our citizens informed, and we also like to remind you of the latest city's COVID-19 information that can be found on our city's website, following Facebook, as well as Twitter. With that, I say good evening and happy Thanksgiving to all.
Thank you so much. We'll turn to our council comments. Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'll be short. Wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Please honor the COVID rules. Please be safe and be healthy. And with that, I say good night, Mayor.
Councilman Fawcett?
Thanks, Mayor. Everybody out there in Sleepy Hole Borough and, of course, the City of Suffolk, somewhere in the next year, we're going to have that Bennett Creek Recreation Facility up and running. That's going to be a cool thing. So everybody stand by, because it is coming, even though we keep telling you that it is coming. And I would like to also say happy Thanksgiving to each and every one of you and your families. I hope that you have a great day. Be safe, but enjoy the day. And go out there and do some shopping online instead of going to the stores. So thank you for a good meeting tonight. We've accomplished some things tonight, and I see you on the 30th at a special session. Thank you.
Councilman Milteer?
First, I wanted to say, have a holiday. I want to thank the city. During the death of my son, I received cards, telephone calls, and flowers. We certainly appreciate it, and we hoping that peace on earth and goodwill will prevail among all men.
Councilman Deeman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a moment and thank Kevin Hughes, and Greg Byrd, and Z. Felder, and Harry Cromer for stepping up and taking the additional responsibility, performing a new role for the city. I know our city manager appreciates it. There's a lot on the table and a lot going on, and everyone's on some type of a learning curve. But we got some good people in place, and I know I was comfortable with it. I'm just going to mention, Tuesday, went at the John F. Kennedy, the Vice Mayor was there, and Lou also, they had a, take a legislate, take a, take your legislate tour to school month, and gave us the opportunity to witness some of the new innovative learning that's going on, the virtual learning that's going on. And, you know, my hats off, my hats are really off to all the teachers. They had a kind of Herculean task to begin with, but then to do it under these circumstances, I mean, I couldn't even start. You almost need to have an IT degree to do what they're doing and try to keep these kids engaged on a computer when they're not in front of you. So I got a little bit of appreciation for that. And we also talked about facilities and that sort of thing. And I think everybody's eagerly waiting for that facility study to come by so we can kind of get a grasp on the school facilities and where they need to be. And with that, I'll go into my quote of the night. It is from Oprah Winfrey, who I guarantee does not need any introduction on my part. And that quote is, "Be thankful for what you have. You'll end up having more. If you concentrate on what you don't have, you will never, ever have enough." And with that, I'll say good evening.
Councilman Worth?
Yes, like Councilman Doohan said, we went to JFK. It was a great experience to see how the teachers would be teaching the kids and not even that, for the students to concentrate on that screen. It's like, wow, okay, could you have done it? But they're doing a great job. Like he says, the way they're doing it, we've seen several ways of both teachers working together and teaching our kids, so kudos to them. And the second thing is, seeing is believing. We looked at some of the issues that JFK had, I've been in an older school, and I'm, like I said, I gave credit to the teachers who have, over the years, who had to deal with some of the things was going on in that school and being dedicated to teach our kids. So like I said, I think we all build a better relationship that short period of time with the school board, and I think we're going to try to do the best we can in helping them in any ways needed for the school, or new schools, or schools in the future. I just want to commend West Tidewater Community Service Board on an issue that I had experienced, so not myself, but anyway. I'd like to give Stephanie a thanks, and Miss Patricia a thanks. And we always sit around and talk about our police officers, and this one time, a really and truly A-plus, because Officer Dee Fester, Officer Bellbar, and Mason, they did a great job with the situation that occurred. So I thank y'all very much for how y'all handled it. And like we always brag about, our police department, it came to life that night, that day, I mean. So anyway, I'd like to say thank all the peoples. Thanksgiving, be careful, and don't forget COVID's still here, so be careful with that. Take it serious. With that, I say God bless.
Councilman Johnson?
I'll be brief, too. I'd like to congratulate all of our new appointees. We look forward to working with all of you. Maybe we can teach you a little something, we'll see. The other thing, I just want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Because of COVID, we have so much to be thankful for. So enjoy your families, what little family you can have around you, and enjoy the day. Thank council for a good meeting tonight, and I'll see you on Monday. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I have a long list. I figured I'd get some attention with that. No, but I would like to say congratulations to all the new appointees, and I'm sure that they're excited, and I am excited for them of their movement up to another level. So congratulations to all them. And I would also like to say thanks to Chief Chandler. He was the guest speaker for the Rotary Thursday, and he really brought a good message, and people were very excited with his presentation. And he went overtime, and they wanted to ask him to come back. So he did an outstanding job with making his presentation about the police department and what they are doing in the community and whatnot. So I just want to give him, they wanted me to do that, to let them know that we really did appreciate him coming. Also, I would like to thank all the teachers and all, as Councilman Dooman and Councilman Ward said, that was a learning experience for me, seeing the virtual learning, how they had to go about doing it. That was, that was amazing, that they had to keep the attention of the kids and all and sitting there in front of a computer like that all those hours. I know it was not easy, so I would just like to commend all of them for the job that they are doing to keep our children educated. And I wish them all the best in their endeavors. And I'd like to say happy Thanksgiving to all, and please follow the guidelines that's put before us. I know I'm one of the ones that love to be with family on Thanksgiving, and we have decided that we're going to be home. We're not going to have family get-together, we're going to do a Zoom, so everybody can sit around and chat and have good conversations. So that's what we plan to do our Thanksgiving. And I would just like to thank Miss Skinner. I don't know if any of the councilmembers, I haven't had a chance to go through her, the whole pack, but I'd like to thank her for her information that she put out to council about some of the things that have taken place in her office since she had been interim over there. And I think that, I just want to let her know that I personally appreciate the information that she's putting out, so people at least know that she's on a job trying to do, keep the offices intact, and making sure that we're getting information that is helpful to us to know what is taking place in that office. And with that, I would say good evening.
Well, I'm going to start out, too, by saying, you know, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. We all have many things to be thankful for. It's easy to sit around and talk about 2020 and what it took away from us, but I think it also gave us a good, a lot of good time with our families and our friends. So maybe not our friends as much, but our families. And our family is absolutely our friends. I want to congratulate our President-elect Biden and our Vice President-elect Harris. And I would say that as a woman of 69 years old, that I am grateful this year, that I am probably, good Lord willing, that I'm here January 20th, I'm going to see a woman in the White House other than as somebody's wife. And I have to tell you that that's a really good feeling for a woman. So I look forward to the future. I look forward to a lot of things, and I know there are things that we could sit and talk about all night that we can be grateful for. But let's, let's do it in our small little groups. Let's keep everyone safe, and just be grateful to have one another for that day. And just think of all the blessings, you know? We can sit all day long and think of things that we've been blessed with over the years. So I just ask us to be careful, be safe, take care of one another, and let's all be grateful for one another as well. And I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Please call the roll?
Councilmember Dooman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Milteer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you.